Well, good morning, all. It is 9:31. We're going to call this meeting to order. May I please have the roll call?
Vice Mayor Baxter.
Here.
Commissioner Flores.
Here.
Mayor Marino.
Here.
Commissioner Powell. Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Woodward.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've asked Commissioner Weiss to lead us in the pledge and the invocation. If you can stand, please do so.
Before we begin our business at hand, let us ask, give voice to our sincere gratitude to the divine for allowing us to reach this day with the abundant blessing that our great community has been bestowed. Let us pray that with sacred guidance from the Almighty for our decision-making, we will continue to work for the betterment of all. Amen.
(inaudible)
Do we have proof of publication?
We do.
May I have a motion to receive and file?
Second.
I have a first from Commissioner Weiss, a second from the vice mayor. All in favor, all opposed? See that that motion carries 7-0. We are now on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, modifications, substitutions, changes?
Mayor, I'd like to reorder the agenda. So I am going to, I'd like to, I moved to reorder the regular agenda items 5E1 and 5E2 to the top of the regular agenda.
We will do that after we do the additions, deletions, and substitutions.
You said, or modifications.
We will do that after we do the additions, deletions, and substitutions. May I have those, please?
They'll move.
Thank you.
There's the add/delete sheet for your consideration. And in it, there are letters that we've received after publication, both for, for all four items, three items, actually four items. 5E1, Park West Commerce North, 5E2, Park West Commerce South, 5E3, West Boynton Ranches, and 6A1, Larrina Plaza.
Thank you. May I have a motion to receive and file?
No.
Sorry?
We already did a receiving.
I'm sorry? Correct. But we, we did the, we haven't adopted it yet. So, all in favor, all opposed? See that that motion carries. Do we have any postponements?
Yes, ma'am. There's a request, and it will be need to be voted by the board because it's not by right. It's item 5E3, West Boynton Ranches, and the request was a postponement till the next round, which is going to be August 27th.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and move to postpone.
Do we have any cards? Yes. We have three cards on 5E3. This is just on the postponement.
Okay, we have Linda Smith, Barbara Roth, and David Shulson.
Sorry, Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida. I wasn't sure I was speaking on the postponement. I meant...
It's just, we are, we're taking a motion to postpone, so if this is...
That was a different card, I think.
Okay, you don't want to talk on this one?
I think it's a bad idea. I'm opposing it. I don't think they can put lipstick on it and make it any better. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Commissioners Barbara Roth, representing Cobra. I'm speaking in favor of the postponement of West Boynton Ranches. We appreciate that the applicant has decided to take some more time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. David Shulson, the Cobra delegate from Valencia Reserve. And Valencia Reserve is not opposing the postponement. We are looking forward to resuming discussions with the development team, Jennifer Morton and her team. And just real quick, on behalf of Valencia Reserve, I want to thank each and every Commissioner for taking the time to meet with our team in the last few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other cards? Okay. All in favor of postponement?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? See that that motion carries, I'm sorry, 6-0, not 7-0.
Excuse me, Mayor. Could we have the maker and the second restated for the record?
Commissioner Flores was the first, Commissioner Weiss was the second. Now it's time for the adoption of the agenda, and would anybody like to make amendments to the agenda?
I moved to reorder the regular agenda items 5E1 and 5E2 to the top of the regular agenda.
Can we get a second?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of moving the 5E1? Commissioner Woodward?
I just wanted to point out, we have a stack of cards for these. Is that, you still want to move it forward?
It will be a vote of the board. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? See that that motion carries 6-0. So we have moved 5E...
5E1 and 5E2.
1 to before the agricultural reserve tier overview and study. So at this time, Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you. I think what's happening by moving 5E1 is that we will be discussing this as a commission, but minus one commissioner. And I believe that Commissioner Powell is coming back. So I would be very interested in not having this discussion without, I always want to call him Senator Powell, Commissioner Powell present and having his opinion heard. So for that reason, I am going to oppose any reordering, especially when it comes to votes. We're going to discuss issues that we have strong opinions on, and we'll take a vote. And he's coming back. He's been excused to go to a graduation. So for that reason, I think if we're going to take votes on issues, we should all be here to have that discussion and have that vote, Madam Mayor. So I would like to have another, and I think that that's, I didn't realize, I don't mind reordering the agenda, but I didn't realize that that is what would occur, is that we would take a vote from the county commission minus one commissioner who is on, I'm sure he'll be here before the end of this session. So I would ask that we, that we discuss a little further the reordering of the agenda.
If I'm not mistaken, we made a motion and we passed it.
I know, but I voted yes on the motion, so I can re, I can ask that it be retaken. Right, Mr. Attorney? Thank you.
So, yes, so under the rules, you can reconsider the motion so long as it, the motion to reconsider is made by a member who voted on the prevailing side of the question. So you can make a motion to reconsider.
And may I just clarify the motion that was made? It might actually help you, Commissioner. So it wasn't to put it now or take it first. It was just to put it at the top of the regular agenda items.
I don't see any, and if I may respond, Mayor...
So we would still have to get through, we still have to get through consent. We still have to get through the, actually, the ag tier overview and study and the public hearings. So it would be the first thing we would be taking on regular agenda.
It's all regular agenda today. There's no consent. So it's all right there. It would go right to the top. So it would go in front of the ag reserve tier overview and study. And as for a commissioner not being here, it seems lately that commissioners are not attending meetings or are leaving meetings early. So we can't, we can't rely on having a seven-member board here all the time, because as of late, that hasn't happened. So I think we have a motion on the table. The motion was seconded. If, if you would like to do a substitute motion to put it back where it is in the agenda, you'll need a second.
It's, it's a motion to reconsider.
It's a motion to reconsider, Mayor. And the reason again, is that unless there is a compelling reason to not wait for all seven commissioners to be here, that's 245,000 people whose voice will not be heard. Unless there is a compelling reason to not have this one commissioner present and give a vote on this very important issue, I see no reason to, to put anything out of order that has already been placed in order by the administration. So I am asking my colleagues if we could take a, have a motion for reconsideration, take a look at it. Okay.
Commissioner, so to restate the motion, I wanted to actually take the ag reserve tier information first. So if we could take that first, that would, I think, be important prior to the 5E1 and 5E2.
I, I don't care if, I just want it to be fair. There's 245,000 people represented by him. I'm sorry, Mayor. This is what happens when, you know, when you have important issues. I think these important issues should be open, transparent, and inclusive of all our commissioners.
Every item on our agenda is important.
And I would just like to make sure that whenever he comes, that that would, that we follow the usual order of, of the agenda. That's all.
Then I request in the future that everyone attend their meetings. And when we have a meeting scheduled, not to schedule other meetings later on in the day. As of late, we have not had people attending, or we have had people leaving early. We cannot continue to have, where I had to ask Vice Mayor Baxter to stay at our last meeting, because we, if she left, we would not have had a quorum, which is a discussion that Commissioner Flores brought up several months ago about having a quorum. And everybody, not everybody, several people have been leaving meetings early. So I'm glad you brought this up, Commissioner Sacks, because we need to make sure that on commission days, when we have meetings, no one else schedules any other meetings. This, every item on our agenda is important, every item. So we are now at a crossroads, because as far as I'm concerned, every, every commissioner should be here for the ag reserve tier overview and study, especially our two new commissioners. So if I, if I had my druthers, I would move that so every commissioner here would be hearing that. As, because it was the new commissioners that wanted to really know about the ag reserve, and one of our new commissioners is not here. So...
Would you like me to withdraw my restatement, and we'll just leave it as we, what we voted on?
Well, can I maybe make a, first of all, we have a motion to reconsider on the table. No one has seconded it.
We did have a second.
Oh, we did have a second. Okay, so then we should, we should have a vote on that. And then pending that, we, maybe we take another vote to reorder the agenda.
Well, I've got lots of lights on, so we've got a motion and a second. Commissioner Sacks, is there anything you'd like to add? No? Commissioner Flores?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, some of the times when we miss meetings, it's out of our control. And to have that discussion here today, it's, when we're talking about one individual specifically, they can't reschedule a graduation, which is what he's attending right now. So I just want to be fair to him, his family. This only happens once in a lifetime. So unfortunately for him, while it probably behooves him to be here, I'm pretty sure he did meet with staff on, on this, like I did. I spent about two hours with staff, so I'm pretty sure he did too, I hope. But I think we also have to be respectful that we do have individual lives, and there are, there are things that are going to happen every once in a while that, that you're not going to be able to be here. I do agree that if you can, if you can be here, you should be here. Absolutely. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Baxter. So we have a motion and a second to keep the agenda as ordered. Commissioner Weiss?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. In the spirit of compromising, I think what, maybe what we, I would suggest we do is why don't we move the item on the ag reserve, the overview of the ag reserve. We can go ahead and take item 4A1, 5A1, 5B1, 5D1, if need be, and then put, hopefully by then, our colleague will have returned to the dais, and he can be here for the overview on the ag reserve, can participate in the discussion that Mayor, Commissioner Sacks has asked about on, on those other two items on Park West.
So you were, you're suggesting to move 3A to before 5E1?
Right. I think that's, that would take care of, take care of that and put it right in front of, before we talk about Park West. So we can move it as, move it there. So that would be, so I guess that would be a substitute, would that be a substitute motion?
Well, that was a reconsider.
That was a reconsideration? Do we have to...
Yeah, so let's undo the, the, the motion that was made to reorder the agenda. So then, once that's undone, then let's make motions to reorder the agenda in whatever way is appropriate.
Okay. So what, so we need to vote on the reconsideration? Okay, so, okay, so call a question. I'm ready to call a question.
If I, Mayor, if I may respond to that. I think that's great, and thank you for the compromise. My issue is very singular. When it comes to an issue of a vote and a discussion amongst all of us, since this is the only time we discuss these issues, we need, we need to try to all be here and to make, and to make arrangements, because Commissioner Powell had a graduation. He was excused. So I don't want to do anything that would limit his availability to discuss, to discuss and vote on these issues, Commissioner Weiss. So whatever...
So, so I'm, just to clarify, I mean, we have multiple items on here to vote on. So you want him here to vote on every item?
Well, do you have any items you don't want him to vote on? Of course.
Well, then, shall we postpone the meeting until he gets here?
Let me clarify. We're not going to postpone the meeting.
Why are we reordering the agenda anyways?
We're trying to give Commissioner Powell the opportunity
Yes.
to be part of the ag reserve tier overview and study, which is something that is important for all of us.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, but that wasn't the issue that I brought up, and that isn't the basis of the issue for the motion to, to deny the reorder. And it, what it comes down to is not information, which we will get from our staff. They have prepared it. I can read it. He can read it. My issue is very singular.
We know that.
To vote on...
We're aware of that.
To, thank you. So it has nothing to do with the information that staff is going to give us on the ag reserve. It, singular issue is he needs, if we can, we need to follow the agenda as it is, so that possibly all seven commissioners will be here.
But he won't, we, our first item is something to vote on.
I know.
So he won't be here. So if you're making that point, I don't understand, I, I want to try and be helpful and, and help you, but I don't understand what you're saying.
What I'm saying is I don't want to reorder the agenda. That's it.
But, but you want him here to vote on something.
If he can. And, and he, and he will be coming back.
All right, I'm going to bring this discussion to a close.
Call the question.
And I'm going to, I'm going to call the question. So, may I have the attorney, please tell us where we are in this discussion? Because we had a motion that was made by the vice mayor and seconded. She had, she has...
Let's vote on the motion to reconsider.
No, I did not withdraw that motion. It stands. I was asking the question that if I restated, would it make Commissioner Sacks happy? I didn't realize at that time there was already a motion to reconsider. So as it stands right now, the motion is, the agenda is reordered to reflect 5E1 and 5E2 to go first. Now, there is a motion on the floor to reconsider.
And it was got a second?
And a second by Commissioner Woodward. And that is what we are voting on if we want to reconsider that reorder.
That's correct.
So we have a motion and a second to bring the agenda back to the way it is written without any, without any...
Just to reconsider, not what we're reconsidering.
It's a substitute motion, but okay. Would it, I'll make a, I will take the vote on whether we should reconsider. All in favor?
Aye.
You want to do a roll call?
Let's do a roll call vote on that, please.
Commissioner Flores? Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss?
Commissioner Weiss?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodward?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Marino?
Yes, it's fine.
6-0.
So now we can reconsider that.
Now what are we reconsidering?
Your motion.
I liked my son's recommendation.
Now we're back to reconsidering your motion.
Are you ready to make your rec, your motion?
Yeah. So can I make a motion?
Make a substitute motion.
Okay. All right. I'd like to make a substitute motion to move item 3A, the AGR tier overview, to right in front of item 5E1.
I have a motion from Commissioner Weiss, a second from Commissioner Woodward.
Wait, if we're moving it, does that mean it's moving back further?
The overview goes further behind, so hopefully we can be here for, for that.
Hopefully.
You don't want that.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Baxter?
I mean, putting this all off till later in the day is what we're trying to do now, is put this in the afternoon?
No, we're putting it till after all other business is done, and then we would take the ag reserve discussion and then 5E.
I don't agree with that. I think we are here. We are, we showed up. We should be having the ag review tier conversation first while we're all fresh, and we're here in the morning, and we're getting through that and recover it.
I withdraw my motion. I was trying to be helpful. I withdraw.
And then we could take on the 5E1 and 5E2. I just, people, by the end of the day, they tune out. I think we need to take those issues first. So I don't mind taking the ag reserve tier. So I would move to take the ag reserve tier item or the sub, well, if you withdrew your substitutes, I don't know if it'd still be a substitute.
I'm, I'm withdrawing.
I think right now with the withdrawal of the motion, the agenda stands as is. Do we in fact have a motion to adopt the agenda as written?
No.
No.
Commissioner Flores?
There is a motion.
We, we already passed a motion, which moved item 5E1 and E2 to forward. So that's where it stands right now. I'm just clarifying that point.
We're reconsidering.
No, we, we're reconsidering, but there hasn't been another motion made. So until another motion is made, we, that's what we've adopted.
Okay, Denise?
Just to clarify, when you do a motion for reconsideration and you approve that motion, then it's exactly how you began with. There is no pending motion at this point. You've wiped the slate clean. You're starting over again. So you need to make a new motion to reorder if that's what you'd like to do.
Vice Mayor Baxter?
Thank you. I'm going to try this one more time. So I move to reorder the agenda to put the ag reserve item first, to then put 5E1 and 5E2 at the top of our agenda.
Commissioner Sacks?
I'm sorry, I don't understand. According to the agenda, we're going to hear about the ag reserve tier overview and study, which was done beautifully by our staff. After that, we have public hearing, and then we go into the votes. So I don't think we should have votes taken before everyone is here. I also believe that under the rules, the public has a right to be, to be heard when it comes to reordering the agenda. What we do here is very important, and it's important that the public have an idea of what's going on, what our opinions are, what our votes are. So let's get the information, let's have the agenda as Mr. Rutter and the other staff has prepared it, and let's move forward as, as listed. And that, I just want to get the meeting started, so go ahead and get moving on it.
Vice Mayor, did you get a second on your motion?
I don't know that I heard one.
Commissioner Woodward, your light is on.
If I could, I would just like to note that the, the agenda was noted to the public, and we are still receiving cards on this issue. And I, I just would think, you know, if there are people who are expecting that item to be at a certain point, they may be still coming. And I wouldn't want to silence anyone and have them get here and be surprised it got moved up. Just because this is, it's a large stack, and I would put that out there. And we are already 26 minutes into this meeting.
Thank you. Would anybody like to make a motion that we leave the agenda as written? We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as written. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? See that that motion carries 6-0. We will now move on to the BCC direction follow-up, the ag reserve tier overview.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could we have the maker and the secondary restated for the record?
Staff, good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, we're going to redo the prayer. This is item 3A, and I know you're at, it was at our request that you come back with this, so thank you very much.
Good morning. Tweeshut for the record, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. I'll make it very brief. This is based on board direction. Staff has an overview of the history, really looking at the comp plan and all the policies, when, way back when, 1980s, what's leading up to the current ask of some of the requests you'll be seeing later on the agenda, and then again, direction for what will happen in the future. With that, I'll turn that over to Ms. Stephanie Gregory, who will be giving us a brief presentation on the history.
Good morning. Okay, so we're going to start by taking it back a few years, beginning in 1980, with the county's first comprehensive plan and before the managed growth tier system. The ag reserve was simply known as the reserve. The boundaries were defined that are slightly different from today, but it introduced limited development options that still exists and served as a foundation for residential development in the tier. The 1980 plan established a base density of one unit per five acres, created the first planned unit development option, the 80/20 PUD, at a density of one unit per acre, and allowed for development rates to be sent outside of the tier. These policies provided a tool for allowing limited residential with the preservation of a significant amount of agricultural land. Between 1980 and 1998, the county continued efforts to evaluate the long-term viability of agriculture and implemented... and implemented strategies for the preservation of these lands. This included the introduction of the 60/40 PUD option and an unsuccessful program to purchase agricultural conservation easements from farmers. The BCC in 1998 directed the development of a master plan to assist voters in determining support for potential bond referendum to fund the purchase of agricultural lands. The South Florida Water Management District, which was also looking at the area for its potential to assist with water resource projects, joined with the county in an effort and agreed to assist with funding the study. Two consultants were selected, CH2M Hill and Dover Coal and Partners. So through extensive public engagement by the consultants, the goals of the master plan were defined in what is known as the interim report. The established goals were to preserve and enhance ag and environmental and water resources and to produce a master plan consistent with those goals. The six objectives included a heavy emphasis on preservation, including enhancing agriculture, environmental resources, water management capability, and open space, while also creating a sustainable form of development and minimizing the cost or impact to taxpayers. So you can see that while the focus was preservation, there was also an understanding that there would be some form of development included. So with these goals and objectives in mind, the consultants in December 1998 presented the Phase One report to the BCC and offered three scenarios. The status quo alternative reflected the likely development outcome if the county continued the existing regulations of the time. The no-bond scenario assumed a development potential with revised regulations, but no land acquisition. In the third option, the bond scenario recommended a bond issue for the acquisition of land specifically for the preservation of agriculture and environmentally sensitive lands, with the goal of reducing the anticipated number of residential units in the ag reserve from 20,000 to 14,000 through the retirement of development rates. The bond scenario was selected and it passed on March 9, 1999, by a two-to-one margin for a total of $150 million, which included $100 million in the ag reserve and $50 million for other areas in the county to purchase environmentally sensitive lands. The bond resulted in the purchase of 2,400 acres, and its success led the BCC to authorize the consultants to proceed with the final phases of the master plan. The multi-year planning process culminated in 2000 with the final master plan document. It incorporated the recommendations made by the consultants and staff, as well as documented the final board direction on a series of topics. It also included implementation actions and identified the departments or agencies responsible for bringing the directions to completion. However, the plan and graphic you see here were not adopted by the board. Rather, the board's directives were translated into policy by staff as Objective 1.5, with corresponding policies that were adopted by the BCC in 2001 within the comprehensive plan. The main objective remained as stated in the master plan to preserve the unique farmland and wetlands for agriculture, environmental water resources, and open space. And this was to be achieved by limiting development, including non-residential, to serve only the residents and farm workers of the tier, and limiting the density and requiring residential development to be clustered with preserve areas. Since preservation is the focus, we'll start with an overview of the preserves. The master plan consultants offered a wide range of preservation methods for the board to consider. But ultimately, as previously mentioned, the board went with a bond issue and also maintained preserve requirements for residential and non-residential plan developments. So there are three methods for preservation today. The first is through the 2,400 acres purchased by the county through the bond, which is then leased to farmers. The second is through PDD development preserves, which are privately owned, restricted by conservation easement, routinely swapped, and represent a large portion of the preserves that exist today. And finally, there are lands under other government ownership by state and federal agencies under preservation. And the map to the right shows both the lands owned by the county and by other government agencies. There were some unanticipated changes to the preserve areas that the master plan did not anticipate and were not included in the subsequent implementing policies, and they generally relate to the requirements for the PDD development preserves. So this is not the full list, as I will highlight some additional ones later as they relate to the specific land uses. But the first change occurred in 2004 due to a development scenario for Apollonia Farms, which requested to utilize South Florida Water Management District lands to serve as a preserve requirement for a 1,500-acre PUD. The utilization of these lands for preserves was not contemplated, and these lands were intentionally excluded from the calculation of potential units that could be built in the tier. In 2006, additional PUDs like Apollonia brought in more water management district lands as preserve. In 2012, the board directed that high-value-added agriculture uses such as packing plants be allowed within preserve areas subject to specific location criteria. And then in 2014, property owners and farmers began seeking additional ways to expand development options in the tier. And due to the large number of requests, a workshop was held by the board, which ultimately led to a series of roundtable discussions where community groups and property owners were encouraged to outline their formal recommendations. The board then considered and adopted amendments in 2015 related to preserve consecuity to allow smaller, isolated parcels to become eligible for preserves. Previously preserved parcels less than 150 acres were required to be located contiguous to other preserves totaling 150 acres. Also, as a result of the roundtables was the adoption of farm residences in 2016, which allow an agricultural property with an existing residence to utilize a portion of their residential lot as a preserve area, which then allowed for the sale of those development rates. In 2021, provisions were adopted that allowed for specified Lake Worth Drainage District canal right-of-ways to be eligible for preserve areas. And then finally, last year, text amendments to the comp plan were adopted to allow an agricultural marketplace as an allowable use within an AGR MUPD preserve. So now we'll dive into the various land uses allowed in the tier, and we'll look at what the master plan consultants recommended in 1999, what the board ultimately adopted into the comp plan in 2001, and then the changes made since then. So starting with the residential uses, the master plan consultants recommended that the board maintain the low-density provisions and development options that were already in place, including continuing one unit per five acres as a base density for the AGR flu. The consultants also recommended continuing the existing planned unit development options, including the 80/20, which requires 80% preserve, and one unit per acre clustered onto 20%, and the 60/40 requiring a 60% preserve and a one unit per acre clustered onto 40%, both of which were development options that had predated the master plan. The board agreed with that recommendation, and the tier has primarily developed with this low-density option as single-family or zero-lot line homes. And this slide shows how the 60/40 PUD works, where the preserve area consists of 60% of the total area, or 150 acres in this example. The allowable uses for these preserves include bona fide agriculture, packing plants that are located adjacent tactic farming, nursery, equestrian, and passive park uses. The development rates are then clustered onto 40% of the land at a rate of one unit per acre, but actually results in a net density of two to three units per acre. So also notice that all of the drainage and infrastructure to support the residential use is all included within the development parcel. In addition to the PUD options, the consultants and the board also desired residential uses in the traditional marketplace developments, also at a density of one unit per acre, in order to create a true mixed-use project by providing a variety in housing types and to create a place to shop, work, and live, reducing the need for a car. Canyon Town Center, shown on the left, is approved for up to 93 units, but only site planned for 34. And Delray Marketplace is approved for up to 96 units, but only site planned for 73. Neither site, as you can see from the aerial, has developed with a residential component. So as previously mentioned, the ag reserve developed almost exclusively as single-family residential at that net density of two to three units per acre. Starting in 2017, there began an interest in developing multifamily projects, which due to the regulations at the time, would have required a significant more amount of land to cluster the units in order to achieve the higher densities. So of the six applications that went to the board between 2017 and 2021, five applications were either withdrawn or denied by the board, and then the only one initiated was for Reserve at Atlantic. In the fall of 2021, with Reserve at Atlantic still in process, staff held a workshop with the board seeking direction on higher-density requests in the tier. The board directed that a new higher-density option be created in order to facilitate workforce housing in the ag reserve. The criteria for sites to seek the new essential housing flu included the allowance of up to eight units per acre located on Boynton Beach Boulevard or Atlantic Avenue, extending from the Florida's Turnpike to one-half mile west of Lyons Road, requires 25% workforce housing onsite with a 60% preserve. However, unlike the 60/40 PUD, where all of the necessary drainage to serve the community is required to be included in the development area, the EH flu is allowed to have a 10% water management tract within the preserve area. Following the adoption of the new land use designation, the Logan Ranch Residential Project became the first site adopted with EH. Around the same time, of the multifamily requests were increasing, there was also an interest by property owners for the development of congregate living facilities in the tier, as none were built due to the density constraints. So in 2022 and 2023, two applications, All Seasons Delray and Erickson Senior Living, proposed a new development option to allow for independent, assisted, and nursing home uses, up to eight units per acre with a modified preserve area requirement. So this chart summarizes the evolution of residential policies in the tier from the 60/40 PUD established in 1995 at one unit per acre to the inclusion of the most recent additions for higher-density development options in 2022 at eight units per acre gross, which end up around 20 units per acre net. As you can see, as each new development option was proposed, the requirements were modified from the original residential option as it relates to location, density, minimum acres, the required workforce housing percentage, preserve percentage, and the preserve uses. In looking at the commercial uses, one of the fundamental tenants of the ag reserve master plan was to focus the non-residential development internal to the tier at a central location for sustainable development and to ensure that commercial development did not exceed demand and thereby serve as a draw from outside of the tier. This was achieved through several policy recommendations by the master plan consultants, including a commercial cap, which is unique to the tier. The consultants recommended a maximum of 1,100,000 square feet and recommended that these, that the space be evenly divided between two mixed-use centers and that all new commercial development be required to have a 60% preserve. The board adopted these recommendations by policy in 2001, with the exception that the commercial cap was reduced to 750,000 square feet. The board also limited the extent and location of mixed-use centers by requiring commercial uses to be located within a quarter-mile Boynton Beach Boulevard and Lyons or Atlantic Avenue and Lyons. In 2005, the BCC selected two centralized locations, one at the north end and one at the south end of the tier, in order to reduce potential trip lengths and to encourage a more sustainable development pattern. The two mixed-use centers selected are the locations we now know as Canyon Town Center and Delray Marketplace. So a lot of the changes to the ag reserve came out of the roundtable in 2014 and board workshop in 2015, including board direction to staff to allow for additional neighborhood-serving commercial and to address commercial uses that predated the master plan, what we refer to as the pre-existing uses. So in 2016, all of the pre-existing commercial sites were accommodated in the comp plan as conforming uses, and the five sites located east of State Route 7 later received a commercial low future land use designation. The 2016 commercial text amendment that was directed by the board to allow for new neighborhood-serving commercial uses increased the cap from 750,000 to 980,000 square feet. At the request of a property owner during one of the public hearings, the board also exempted sites 16 acres or less from the preserve requirement, but maintained the location criteria previously established. Within the next two years, the board adopted eight sites to commercial low, and all of the available square footage in the cap was accounted for. With the cap fully absorbed through approvals in 2017, a pre-existing commercial use known as Three Amigos requested to expand and develop, and the board increased the cap an additional 35,000 square feet to accommodate it. A request to exempt self-service storage in 2020 for another pre-existing site known as West Boynton Center was also successful and adopted by the board. So the cap today is at 1,015,000 square feet with just over 10,000 square feet remaining. So this slide shows the Boynton Beach Boulevard corridor. This shows the land uses that have been adopted over time, and we have the quarter-mile radius shown in red where commercial is allowed within the pre-existing commercial sites in pink. And this slide shows Atlantic Avenue with that same quarter-mile radius. All right, so going now into the industrial policies. The ag reserve master plan consultants acknowledged the importance of employment-generating uses and creating a sustainable development by providing a variety of job opportunities. So they recommended two employment centers. These two centers were to contain a maximum of 330,000 square feet industrial and 245,000 square feet of office park in order to provide employment hubs for the tier. These two locations were identified as within a quarter-mile of the Florida's Turnpike interchanges with Boynton Beach Boulevard and Atlantic Avenue. The consultants considered these locations with light industrial uses to have the least negative impact on agricultural uses. The board, however, did not agree with the consultants' recommendation and directed in 2001 that no new industrial future land use designations be permitted in the ag reserve. However, they did establish a floor-area ratio for the 64 acres of industrial future land use that preexisted in the master plan, and those are located north and south of Atlantic Avenue, east of State Route 7 in purple on the map. As there was no policy guidance in the comp plan, staff had consistently recommended denial of industrial requests. So during the discussion of a site requesting industrial in 2021, the board directed staff to look at establishing a light industrial future land use designation. The board then adopted in 2022 a text amendment to establish the commerce flu in the comprehensive plan with additional criteria and preserve requirement. Since the creation of the commerce flu, the board has adopted six amendments totaling a maximum potential of just over 2 million square feet. So this slide summarizes and compares the previous non-residential policies and shows the evolution between 2001 and now of the commercial future land use requirements as it relates to the location criteria, the cap, and required preserve percentage. And as you can see, the preserve requirement for commerce established by the board differs from commercial. Both allow for the first 16 acres to be exempt. However, commercial requires a 60% preserve, whereas commerce was adopted at 40%. So moving on to institutional uses, the master plan consultants acknowledged the importance of these uses for viable, sustainable community and recommended that they be allowed broadly on any lands that had a residential future land use designation. The BCC agreed with the consultants to allow institutional uses in the ag reserve future land use, but adopted a policy which still exists today that prohibits these uses west of State Route 7. This prohibition was primarily driven by regional water management projects proposed for the area, including a reservoir to support the comprehensive Everglades restoration plan and the construction of a potential water preserve area by the Water Management District, which is shown here in red, both of which were intended to be located west of State Route 7, but were never built. So as you can see here, a snapshot of the institutional uses that exist today throughout the tier are primarily located east of State Route 7, with the exception of the West Delray Regional Park and a US Postal Office. Institutional uses are allowed within the AGR flu, which is the primary land use of the tier, or within the preserve areas of TMDs and MUPDs, of which we have 415 acres. However, they are not allowed within the residential PUD preserves. In looking at changes over time, in 2005, the board adopted an amendment to institutional for the Bethesda West Hospital. And in 2016, the three existing institutional uses, Eternal Light Cemetery, Faith Farm Ministries, and Carrot Eternal Light Cemetery, Faith Farm Ministries, and Caridad Center, were added to the comp plan to acknowledge their conforming use status. So with the history complete, we'll now look at the current status of the tier through data and maps created by our zoning director, Lisa Mayer, which will show how all of these policies and changes have been implemented since 2001. So this is the snapshot from the last Ag Reserve workshop that was held in March of 2023, and the highlights include of the just over 22,000 acres in total in the tier, that 29% is residential, 4% non-residential, with 60% of the land in preservation and 582 acres, or 3% of the total acreage, as other remaining lands. And we consider the other remaining lands as parcels with development rights but not in preserve status nor with an approval. So you can see at the time, we had a significant acreage or 3% of the total lands in process as pending applications. The snapshot today shows a slight increase in residential from 29 to 30%, but also shows an increase in lands in preservation from 60 to 61% with other preserve uses increasing. Other remaining lands were slightly reduced from 582 acres to 489, and pending applications are down to 0.5% of the total land area. So this slide shows the location and existing uses of those other remaining lands, including the pending applications in pink. And this one is a look at the PDDs, which there are approximately 14,000 acres approved with almost 5,700 acres in development, which is over 8,000 in preserve. There are 13,000 units approved, which is close to the 14,000 anticipated in the master plan with the bond purchase. This includes over 11,000 built units and almost 1,400 approved but unbuilt CLF beds. For the PDD preserves, there are just over 3,000 acres in government ownership and 5,000 in private ownership. So here's a comparison of the master plan graphic with the 2025 snapshot. The development that has taken place is a bit more spread out than what was originally envisioned, but the areas west of State Route 7 are primarily in preservation with non-residential uses along the main corridors. We'll continue, okay?
Everyone okay?
Please silence your cellphones.
Okay, so there are currently five amendments in Ag Reserve in process. The first one, West Delray RV Resort, will be on the May BCC zoning agenda for adoption, and the four remaining are on the agenda later today. And so now I'll turn it back over to Tree.
Yes, as you can see with our history and review of what's led up to today's, you know, for the board's consideration, we do have several items that we'd like to draw to your attention. Again, and the slide shows there are requested uses in the preserve area, institutional uses, as Stephanie has mentioned, recreational as well as passive parks with lakes. As land becomes more scarce, as development priorities become competing priorities, we do have several clarification we would like the board to consider and give us some direction on for the purpose of consistent implementation of some of the flu future land use, also for transparency, and then also to make sure that there is predictability for the development industry. Go to the next slide. Again, this is summary of the allowable uses in the preserve area as stated by Stephanie. There are various changes that have occurred on what is allowed and what is, you know, not allowed in the preserve area through the years. So with this slide, there are, in the tan colored at the bottom, those are the allowable uses in the preserve area in the residential PUD preserve areas as well as the ag or commercially mixed-use type of preserve areas. So in the residential portion, Stephanie had mentioned, in the essential housing future land use, there's a maximum of 10% that's allowed for stormwater management purposes. And in comparison to the ones that involve commercial, there's 100% allowable water management, you know, storage purposes in the commerce flu. So let's go back to, again, what the comprehensive plan actually states. In this policy, 1.5 IG is specifically stated as before, no more than 10% of the total project preserve areas allowed, subject to some of the criteria listed from letter C through E. One of the questions that we'd like to have the board clarify for us is, again, we have noted there are underground, overhead easements throughout the county. In the Ag Reserve, we allow existing and/or new overhead, underground easements to traverse the preserve area. A lot of it could be for preservation of future ag uses. Also, a lot of it could be for drainage purposes. So these are your piping easements underneath and traversing through the preserve area. So if these are allowed, the issue is because the comp plan does specify that no more than 10% can be associated with stormwater management features, we'd like to clarify and make sure that we are proceeding with the right understanding that these are allowed, therefore they're not to be counted towards a 10%. So that's really the direction we'd like to have. What this would affect, possibly, we normally put a conservation easement over these preserve area. We'd like to, subsequent to board direction, we will evaluate with the county attorney's office and bring out any amendments to the conservation easements if needed. And again, circling back to board direction back in February, we'd like also for direction in terms of a study for the area, if the board choose to. The scope of work is listed here under the first bullet. Again, to recap, it's analysis of future land use designation. The consultant will do an analysis of infrastructure deficiency needs, traffic, water, sewer, and drainage, and analysis service delivery provider needs such as school parks, fire rescue, engagement of all stakeholders and interested parties, and identifying potential comp plan policy and ULDC changes. As directed by the board, we had preliminary cost estimates between a quarter of a million to half a million, approximately nine to 12 months. In light, unfortunately, of recent changes in the legislation, our county attorney, Darren Leiser, can speak on that, there is a Senate bill that's before the governor for signature that may preempt local governments from creating more restrictive or cumbersome requirements for our area, so.
Certainly, if you'd like to hear from me, I'd be happy to explain.
Go right ahead.
Sure. So there is a Senate Bill 180, which has been approved by both houses of the legislature. It's awaiting the governor's signature. It's got two provisions in it. One of its provisions applies going forward, but another provision applies retroactively to August 1st, 2024. And that provision essentially prohibits proposing or adopting any moratorium on construction, reconstruction, or redevelopment of any property damaged by such hurricane. And the hurricanes are either Debbie, Helene, or Milton. And we are listed as affected by Hurricane Debbie and Milton, so this would apply to us. Propose or adopt any moratorium on construction, reconstruction, or redevelopment of any property damaged by such hurricanes. Propose or adopt more restrictive or burdensome amendments to its comprehensive plan or land development regulations or propose or adopt more restrictive or burdensome procedures concerning review, approval, or issuance of a site plan, development permit, or development order. So, oh, and this prohibition lasts until October 1st, 2027. So with respect to today's discussion, you know, if the governor signs this law, anything that comes out of this study that would recommend more prohibitive or burdensome changes to the comprehensive plan or the LDRs would be prohibited until August 1st, I mean October 1st, 2027.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodward.
Commissioner White, after Commissioner Woodward, then Commissioner Sacks, and then Commissioner Vice Mayor Baxter.
Question for the attorney on this. Does this mean any changes that would have been made at, did you say August 1st of last year?
That's right. So it would apply retroactively. So if we had made any changes after that, after August 1st, 2024, they are potentially, and they're more burdensome, than they're potentially void.
Alright, so I understand, moving forward, that, do we know, did we have, did we make any policies from August 1st of last year that would fall into this category?
My understanding is we have not. I spoke with my colleague, Scott, who does the zoning aspect, and we do not believe that we have, so.
Okay, so at this point, it would just be any decisions we make moving forward?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you. Thank you for this excellent, comprehensive presentation. So let me first address your specific question that you're looking for direction on, and are underground easements associated with stormwater management features included in the 10% calculations? And my direction would be no. I think that easements are something that exist today, and I don't think when we originally talked about that and having those water features, we contemplated that they would be included. So that's, that would be my direction on that. And then, as it relates to the study, according to my calculations, there's about 664 acres potentially left that is not in the entire Ag Reserve that's potentially developable to spend. And I don't, I mean, a couple hundred thousand dollars to do a study for those 600 acres.
489.
For the 600 acres that are remaining is.
489.
What's that?
489.
Well, it says there's 3% other remaining lands, so. Yeah, so I don't know that it would, I don't know that it justifies that cost. So, but that's just my, you know, if somebody, I could see where somebody could say, well, it's maybe that we need somebody to figure out if we need more schools or something else, I don't know. But at this point, it seems like a lot of money for something that has, will have relatively small impact. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is for the attorneys. And we had a discussion about this yesterday, I believe, and I appreciate your expertise. Reading this bill, does it, it seems to mean that there are certain counties that Senate Bill 80 targets, that whatever they do with regard to development or moratorium on land, that that can be done away with it, that can be waived, that it can be null and void once this bill takes effect. You and I talked about when the bill would take effect. Does it make any difference because it's retroactive, right? So if we, so whatever we do, it could very well be subject from the state of Florida to being null and void.
Yes, I believe that's what I was trying to say, yes.
It's saying it.
Yes.
And I like the way it says "certain counties", and we know that we are one of those certain counties. So it is, and I would like to hear, as we proceed in today's agenda, I'd like to hear your opinion on these things because I certainly don't want to have applicants get ready and spend money and then have everything null and void at the end of it.
Well, it doesn't apply to applications that are privately initiated. So it's only, it's only if the county is making the changes, if they're county-initiated changes.
Or if a private initiation gets federal funds, then. But you are the expert in this, so I would defer to you, but I'd like to hear your opinion as we go through the agenda. Because I certainly don't want, if a private applicant is getting federal funds and then comes down to whether, and again, it's if the governor signs it. However, it is a Senate bill, and politically, he probably will sign it. So I'd like to hear your opinion as we go through the agenda, if we could. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for putting this together. We've, some of us have heard it a few times, and I always appreciate the refresher course. Questions for you, though, and some things came up. I do agree with Commissioner Weiss, they don't want to spend the money. If they want, if other commissioners want to potentially look at it after we see if this bill is signed or not, that could be an option. But I do have a few questions in regards to calculation of open space, right? So if you went to Slide 16. So there seems to be several properties in the Ag Reserve that have this clustering of development. Would you like to, if someone from staff could share with us the history on why that was done?
I can attempt. Again, these are planning practices or planning concepts. You will find some of, we would call it straight zoning, where there are minimum lot sizes, you have what you have, and you have your setbacks. In the Ag Reserve and in some of our plan unit development, the thought is if you can cluster, putting all the development, the building pads, and the uses closer together, you will gain more net open space throughout the development. So hence, you'll hear us saying net density versus gross density. So these development options were an attempt to preserve land for ag uses, potential ag uses, or maintaining land for existing uses as well as accommodating development and preserving open spaces. So hence, we have the 80-20, 80% preserve, 20% developed. Then you had the allowances for 60% preserve, 40%. And through the years, there were accommodation based on the priorities and the needs of the county as the board felt necessary. So we also had the essential housing to address, again, different types of housing in the Ag Reserve other than single-family. There were multifamily options that would allow townhouses and apartments as well as CLFs. So those, again, were placed in the essential housing, which allows you an additional 10% for water management feature to be within the preserve area. So you, in essence, have an official 50-50%. So again, it's really a planning concept that is trying to cluster all the development, hence also economizing the length of pipes and the different infrastructure needs for that development.
What if a builder wasn't concerned about that? What if the builder wanted to take what the allowed density and put them on one or five-acre lots?
They're able to do that.
In the Ag Reserve?
Without that PUD, yes, they can, they can do a straight zone subdivision.
At one unit per five acres.
I'm sorry.
But not one unit per one acre or less than five acres?
Right. So in order to get that, the higher density, they have to do a planned development.
And are they still meeting the open space requirements?
If it's a straight subdivision, there is no requirements for that.
In the Ag Reserve?
In the Ag Reserve.
Okay. So I guess, why do we keep hearing, then, that this is the only way they're allowed to build is by clustering it together?
That is really not something that. That is really not something that staff has presented.
Can you move the microphone closer to you or speak a little louder, please?
Again, that's something that may be the development, depending on the development industry, what type of housing and what type of development they're delivering. The straight zone or the zone, the option for one unit for every five acres has always been available, but most people do not feel that that density would justify the cost of the development.
So why can't they do one unit per one acre?
Because the only option in the ag reserve for that higher density is the PUD option, the planned development option.
That was what I was getting at.
Yeah. It's a choice for the developer.
Well, does the developer really have a choice? What if they wanted to spread it out instead of clustering it together? It doesn't sound like they have that option unless they spread it out onto five-acre lots. Is that the case? Twee, I'm going to refer to Lisa, if you don't mind.
No, no problem.
Lisa, would you please explain?
It is more zoning-related, anyway.
The technique that was done was to allow essentially one unit per acre for the AGR-PDD is kind of a density bonus. So the idea was, back in the 80s and early 90s, they decided, let's allow, rather than one unit per five acres, let's allow one unit per acre and require the clustering so we can get agricultural preservation on, on 60% of the land area. That was, it was just part of the technique. In the 80s and 70s, there was a couple of developments that were done at two-and-a-half-acre lots. There's a couple of those, like Willis Gliderport, and there's a couple other, but it was a density bonus technique to get that preserved.
And then, was there some train of thought that the preserved area would potentially be able to use for farming?
Yeah, that was the idea, that that 60% be used for natural lands or agricultural purposes. And it's also, in some cases now, it, it's used for open space purposes as well.
And in that open space, is there any work done to it, or is it just literally raw land?
Sometimes, there are some open space preserves currently that are just kind of open space. There's no requirement or that it, you know, we don't force farming on the AGR-PDD preserves, and there are some, like the Back of Faith Farm, that was allowed to be a preserve area, and it is in open space. For the Canyons Town Center, there is a park that is in the open space, and we have two schools now.
And what would it take, and honestly, the ag reserve is Commissioner Sacks's district, so I'm going to refer, defer to her in some of these questions, but what would it look like if we wanted to allow the open space in between homes versus the clustering as another tool in the toolbox, not as an, instead of?
I think the board would probably have to reconsider that density bonus component, because right now, those 60% have had the density stripped off. So if we were to do any other type of technique, I think the board would have to have a, probably a full workshop on where do you want to see the development in the tier and how many units you want. The original vision, we wanted to get that down to 14,000. There are currently 13,000 units approved and over 1,000 CLF beds, so that's, you know, kind of right around the 14,000. That's what we had envisioned for public facilities planning. If there was any kind of reconsideration of how to add more units or do something different with the open space.
Yeah, not adding more units, just where they place the units.
Then that would be a reconsideration of the board on how, you know, if you wanted to do a different technique, but again, most of the land is committed, other than 489 acres, which are mostly five-acre tracts, like scattered around all over on that one slide.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Commissioner Woodward and Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Some stuff has changed since the last time we've talked about this, a few numbers. I wanted to just go to the end where you were asking for board direction, and I agree with Commissioner Weiss about the drainage and the easements, not having to account for, for that and allowing that, especially, I think there was underground utilities that were discussed, and, you know, I'm, I'm good with leaving those. I wanted to, and I do think I agree as far as on not paying for a consultant to do a plan, I mean, you guys know a lot about this, it was a big ask for you, but you live it, so you were able to, to deliver this for us. I wanted to go back, I had a couple of questions on, I think it was slide 11, I'll start. Where, we had talked about number of units and, you know, like there's the preserved land, it were in, in this general area, and you mentioned how many units, 13,000 and change, are those actually built or approved?
They're almost entirely built. There's 11,000 built of the AGR-PUD preserves. I have a spreadsheet. So, yeah, there's 13,367 in the AGR-PUD preserves, units approved. There's more units approved and unbuilt in Canyons, and then we have about 1,200 units approved and built in Willis Gliderport, Delray Lake Estates, Rio Poco, some of those subdivisions, Horseshoe Acres, Tierra del Rey, and La Reina.
So how many actual residential units are, are in these 22,000 acres?
The, on, in the whole tier, the total number of residential units, did I put that on a slide?
And, and I'm going to ask for separate for CLF and essential housing, so, to, to keep those separated, please.
Yeah, I'm, I think, okay, she's bringing up. Did we put the to, did that include?
Yeah.
That, that's the AD, did that include?
It's 44.
44. Okay, yeah, that's in the PDDs, and there's an additional 1,200 that are not in the planned developments in those subdivisions, so just take that. So 13,000 approved, plus the 1,200, and then that would be the total amount of development available in the tier right now that are approved.
So the 1,200 that you were talking about are going to be the larger ones that were probably already there when this was designated? Those, those aren't part of any planned group, but they are residential?
Yep.
Okay, that's, and that's 1,200, you said? Is it, sorry, there's a lot of numbers here.
I'm sorry, I was looking at acres, it's 400.
400 homes?
It's 400 in the straight subdivisions.
Okay. And then, on the essential housing, only one has been, like, gone through the full process to be approved, and I think that number was cut in half. How many units is that?
They reduced it down to 180 units.
And how many were we planning for in essential housing? Are, were we allotting?
We did do an analysis in that staff report, I'd have to pull it up real quick.
Okay. And then, the CLF beds are, was there ever a consideration for how many of those we would allow to be built in this area? Okay.
No, that's kind of a new concept. You know, and our target was 14,000 way back in 1999, but, you know, it is, we've gotten around that threshold right now, and considering the other remaining is less than 500 acres, we're kind of ballpark what we are, are always envisioned.
Okay, and then, if I could go back to page 27, where we had the commercial cap? That was, sorry. Because we have the two numbers on here, and I know some of these, it's approved, approved, we are almost to the cap. What was actually built, we are way under, but I know some of these just haven't been built, some of them were built under what was allotted. Do we have a, a good understanding of actual kind of excess commercial that's not going to be built through some of these that received a certain amount of square footage, but they didn't build it?
The challenge with calculating the commercial cap is that there are some developments that have approved commercial square footage, such as the hospital that's on Atlantic Avenue. They were approved for, I think, 90,000 square feet of commercial development, but they're not actually going to build that because they changed to a hospital. So there is kind of this, kind of disparity between the future land use adopted ordinance in the potential square footage that they can have versus what they're ever going to actually build. That's what makes managing this cap very difficult, and there is not a cap on residential units, there is not a cap on the CLF beds, and when we did commerce, staff didn't recommend a cap on that square footage either, because it's just a very difficult figure to manage when you have multiple sites and multiple applications and multiple things in play. But there is kind of a gap there between the amount of future land use square footage that they theoretically have the potential to achieve and then what they're ever actually going to build.
So the cap only exists for commercial, because we, do, do we have a cap for industrial as well?
No.
Okay, just commercial?
Yes.
And we're, we're there as far as the, what's been approved, but not what's been built?
Correct.
And some of these that have been approved may have approval for some future, there's not like a site plan or a planned development for this, it's they got approved for X number of square feet and they're kind of, it's there for future. Is that correct?
Yes, because the, the figure that is in, and a lot of those numbers came from the 3-5D traffic analysis in the cap, and it's not actually reflected on the site plan, they actually have less. So, you know, and the idea was, back in the day, when, when the board and the consultant came up with a cap, which is, this is unlike anywhere else in the entire county, the idea at that time, the pressure in the late 90s was these mega Walmarts and mega Targets and, you know, commercial has changed over the years, and as, you know, post-COVID, shopping is different, everything is different. I can't remember the last time we approved a mega, large retailer. Most of the time, we're seeing the smaller, the public shops. The hottest thing in commercial right now is oddly fast food and car washes. That's the most of the, the commercial things we're seeing. The other idea was to capture the commercial in the ag reserve to a limited amount for the residents. They didn't want it to be a draw for other people coming in, so that's why it's at Lyons and Boynton and Lyons and Atlantic. But in 2005, 2006, the board said, how about allowing some small neighborhood-serving commercial? Then we made some changes as, went through with the presentation, we upped the cap. We eliminated the acreage cap that had been there at the time, a maximum of 80 acres, and, and now we are here with this. I mean, an alternative could be eliminating the cap or adding more policies in lieu of the cap to a different technique for managing commercial growth.
Okay. Is this something in lieu of us hiring a consultant? Because I think, for me, this, this discussion and along these lines was what I was hoping to get from this. Would you feel comfortable being able to bring back to us maybe some potential policy changes or adjustments on addressing the commercial cap? And, I mean, because I think a lot of the development pressure is going to be commercial or industrial uses and for us to kind of manage. We're talking 489 acres that are unattached or whatever at this moment, so it's, it's not a lot, but, I mean, if this is where the pressure is coming from, help, be able to help us, you know, look at this in that way and, and realize, you know, some, some of these may never be, but, I mean, if they've built it and they were under 30,000, 40,000 square feet, what was allotted, and there's a parking lot there now, I mean, do they really, are they ever going to build an extra 40,000 square feet? So I think for us, we, we would, it would help us to, to adjust this and discuss the cap. I don't know about getting, eliminating it, that's a board discussion, but that was one of the things I hope to get from the consultant, what to, you know, allow in these last 489 acres, what is existing, and what's the reality of what we have approved.
The, it, it wouldn't be difficult to look at the Boynton Beach corridor and the Atlantic corridor, the, the vacant lands that are there, the approved and built in the commercial that are subject to that chart right there, and to come back with a more specific analysis, because we have all of the site plans. And, you know, the, as far as the other remaining goes on those two corridors, there's a, the, the item that got postponed today, there's another strip of land on Boynton, and then there's two areas along Atlantic that have, likely, might get asks for future industrial or commercial, I mean, but really, those two corridors are where we see the requests, and it would be possible to do that analysis on this chart and come back.
Okay.
I have your answer for essential housing. So we did do an analysis when that was adopted by the board, and based on the commercial, the location criteria for essential housing and the minimum acreage size, we had estimated that there could be a maximum of 268 acres eligible for the essential housing, future land use designation. You know, obviously, that would require a land use amendment by the board, and that would have resulted in 2,152 units.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, and then, I, I guess just my, my last question would be, oh, wait, I lost my place. Maybe come back to me, I have too many pages.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You all did a great job here, really did, thank you very much. And it, I can hear my colleagues saying, why do we need to hire a $250,000 consultant when we've got this kind of expertise? Were any of you here when the ag reserve was created? I thought so. Didn't want to say it. And you were here too, right, Twee? Okay, I need a little history lesson. I think, was Bert Aronson here in this seat? All right. I don't know if this is the exact chair, but I know that he was very important in that discussion. Okay, this is the question. Now, I know the answer to this, and I'll bet you do too. Why the ag reserve? Why this location? Why this area, which I represent? Why did they want, why did the commissioners here and staff want to preserve this particular area of Palm Beach County? It's like a game show, you know? That, that, that's...
Turn on your mic, please.
Your microphone.
There was a missing 20, 15, 20 years in which I was absent, but when, when I started here, there, this area was a transition between the Marshall, Luxhatchee Wildlife, and also the, the development back then area. And there were certain produce and farming capabilities that is, that is afforded in this area as well. So again, both with the preservation and the environmental water sensitivity, as well as just serving as a buffer to the wildlife refuge. There is some concept back then, why this area was special, so Lisa can fill in.
Something else to add is, there was a lot of emphasis in the 90s about the Gulf Stream and how this area had a climate that was different than others, and it was internal, and it could have vegetable farming.
Right.
That was unique at the time. So the, the combined, the combined effort of the climate and the East Coast buffer kind of protection is the idea.
Exactly correct. Both of you are correct. I only know this because I've lived in the ag reserve for over 40 years, and I couldn't understand, why are we having, welcome to the agricultural reserve, what, what is so special? And it's the soil, it's the dirt, and it's between the sandy soil of the east and the muck of the west, and we have that wonderful, so, the agriculture in the ag reserve is special, right? It's special because we have dragon fruit, we have, I think, Mr. Yi produces, who's one of the farmers, produces all of the Chinese vegetables for all the Chinese restaurants in Palm Beach County. So the agriculture, and what I'm getting is, the agriculture is very, very important to maintain and preserve. Question, the two corridors that we talk about, and my colleague was questioning about, was that, was that not from the early 1990s when it was created, was that not for retail or commercial, to take care of the farming and equestrian communities that were there? So in other words, instead of necessarily having a shoe store, it would rather be a feed store, which there are there, but it was to serve the needs of the farmers, and employment for the farmers and equestrians at that time? Is that, was that the purpose, not of, of having these two corridors, and I'm talking Atlantic and Boynton Beach?
Yeah, that was the intent, to serve both the residents, the farmers, and the farmworkers of the tier.
Okay. We never got rid of that, I mean, we still want to do as much as we can to take care of the farmers, because we want to preserve agriculture there. No other place do you find the fruit and vegetables grown in the ag reserve anywhere else, I believe, in the state of Florida, so it's pretty, pretty precious. Thank you for your work. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Flores. Commissioner Sacks, did you want to give input on the study or the easement? Okay. Commissioner Flores.
So in regard to the study, staff, do you find that there is a need for any of the items that you were requesting in the study? Has there been any requests from the school district or from fire or anyone to make you feel that a study is warranted? Or are we just posing the question to pose the question?
You know, so I think it could be helpful in some ways. We have a list of, you know, we're seeing a lot of requested uses specifically in preserve areas where the school district is looking for a new site. You'll likely see some more text initiations for mixed use projects. So in terms of having a comprehensive study that could look at those potentials, it could be helpful.
But is it up to us to do a needs analysis about a school? Or is that up to the school district?
Well, yeah, the school district would.
Yeah, so I would leave them to do their study and figure out where they need schools and behooves them to act accordingly because I think land is at a premium right now. So that's up to them. So I'm not in favor of the study at this point, considering how much land is available. And regarding the 10%, it should not be part. I agree with my fellow commissioners. You know, for me, this is a very interesting concept. And going through the history was very, was good. I enjoyed it. Thank you for dedicating the time and effort to answering my questions. And I thought your presentation here is very thorough. There were things that I questioned about what the decisions that were made before. And I had some of those questions for you. But I do appreciate that our predecessors did have the foresight to preserve an area of our county to make sure that we continue to farm and have agriculture in that area. And I know the bond is a big topic when it comes to this area. And the assumption is that we purchased all this land when we really didn't. We only purchased 10% of the total land available. We have been able to preserve others through other ways, whether it's the state or dollars that we're used to purchase certain lands. But where we're at now in the county, one of the things that we see shortages in housing. And one of the things that you guys mentioned to me that when this was originally zoned, inclusionary zoning wasn't included in this. Could you give me the reason why? Was there a reason why we have million dollar homes and over instead of inclusionary zoning for the ag reserve?
That one will be on me to answer. Being there from the beginning. The decision was made early on, someone wrote inclusionary zoning in 2005 and 2006. Excuse me. Decision was made because of the density limitation. So again, the base density is one unit to five acres. If you engage in a PUD, you automatically create one unit to the acre. At the time, and until we created essential housing, that was it. So there were no bonus densities or things of that sort. So the thought was because it was a unique structure of development, because it required, excuse me, the set aside to not require an inclusionary component, to not require that workforce component that comported with the development pattern that was there. There was no basis to apply a bonus density to it.
So what the outcome has been is million dollar homes and over in the ag reserve. And it's great. However, what we have seen in this county is that we have a shortage of workforce housing and affordable housing. And this board has adapted to the times changing and they have made changes through the times to include essential housing in '22. So to me, it's enlightening to see what's happened. But I think the issue here was also that we didn't properly plan from the get go. And I'm glad that this board has been able to shift and adjust to the times. And I think having that flexibility is always important in any planning because as time goes, what we've seen from when this was originally created to where we're at today, that it's not the same times that we lived in. Our population has grown tremendously and we've been able to adjust to that. So from the staff, thank you for catching us up to speed. I know you guys spent a lot of time with me. I'm assuming you did the same with my fellow commissioners. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Flores. Do we have some cards?
We have seven.
Why don't we go ahead and take those?
We'll start with Linda Smith, Dr. Lori Vinicor, Brian Seymour, and Jean Strojek. We have two microphones.
Ms. Smith, Jupiter, Florida. Thank you, staff. I always appreciate the presentations and this is wonderful to get a recap. I understand that, you know, there's five acre plots and all that. Back in the day, that might not have been considered luxury back then because the price of an acre was so much less. Of course, we know what's happened. It's luxury communities and I understand that. And I'm going to say this once today because we're going to be talking a lot. This and other previous commissions have systematically destroyed the ag reserve with the death by a thousand cuts. We've always been hearing that phrase. We also heard that there are about 500 acres left allowed to be developed. But I did some quick math and I think you're hearing about 100 acres today. So we'll see how that all pans out. They're all asking for privately initiated tier changes, FLUA amendments, and text initiations. It was pointed out Canyon and Delray Marketplace should have 180 units. Let's develop those and get they've already been approved. I don't understand all this talk about essential housing. And I understand that the county only purchased the 2,400 acres, but the comprehensive plan was adopted. Originally, that 60% preserved land, I don't believe was to be used for drainage. I'm not talking about the easements. I'm talking about the site drainage. I mean, if the project wasn't built, it could be 100% preserved land for agriculture. The state road seven line in the sand has been crossed multiple times. And I asked the board to please in the future protect the preserved lands that we have been designated through this process and hold the owners of that land accountable to maintain them, whether it's an ag reserve or in just open land. Open land also needs to be maintained against exotics and trash and whatever else might be happening there. Please don't let the future needs, whether it's a school district need or fire station or whatever, to chip away on this land. It was hard fought to own and to preserve, not to own, to preserve. And please keep it intact. Thank you.
Good morning, mayor and commissioners. I'm Lori Vinicor. I live at 10626 Lyrena Road in Delray Beach in the agricultural reserve. I'm a farmer and also president of the Alliance of Delray Residential Associations. I was one of the 19 leaders that participated in the 2014 Agricultural Reserve Roundtable. Just to expound on what staff had written regarding the Thomas Produce Packing Plant. To the opposition of the alliance, the Board of County Commissioners removed from the agricultural tier, the Thomas Produce Packing Plant, which is at the corner of Clintmore Road and 441, about 39 or 40 acres. We requested there to be not hundreds of thousands of commercial square footage and a CLF and a few other things there. So but if they had done that, they would have changed the agricultural reserve for the future. So what they did was they decided to remove it and it went to the urban suburban tier. So they got approval for hundreds of thousands of square feet of commercial and a CLF. Well, most recently, the developer asked to change it to completely residential. And now there's 72 homes being built on that 40 acres, but it's not in the agricultural reserve anymore. But just to think of what the agricultural reserve would have looked like differently if perhaps at that time, the 72 homes were the residential would have been would have been used for that Thomas Produce Packing Plant area, which is now residential. And that just demonstrates the residential nature of 441 corridor, south of Rio Grande Avenue, which the commissioners decided would be. Stonebridge Country Club, The Oaks, we're all very happy that once it did become a residential parcel because that's a residential corridor. Thank you.
Commissioner Sacks, your light is on.
Okay, Dr. Vinicor, could you come back? Lori, I know you're president of the alliance, but you also say you're a farmer.
Yes.
Where do you farm?
I have horses and we have exotic fruit trees, all sorts of exotic fruit trees. And our alliance July 2 meeting is going to be have Rick, Ron Rice come to speak about the agriculture and all and farming our backyard so that some of our communities, which are smaller lots and even condominiums, can plant in pots, trees, fruit trees. So we have everything from mangoes to avocados to carambola, to many longans and that's what we propagate.
And that's unique to the soil of the ag reserve?
Yeah, the soil is very good. Oh, yeah, there are certain things that cannot be grown north and we can grow it there that need the warm. Like they were actually, we can grow different types of jackfruit, different types of that kind of a fruit there. And sometimes they can't be grown very far north.
I want to make sure it's still morning. Mayor, Commissioners, Vice Mayor Baxter, I appreciate this. I'm going to go quickly because really I'm here on one narrow issue. You can thank Mr. Strojek. He's going to keep me talking only on one thing, even though I probably could go for hours. And I heard from three of you, starting with Commissioner Weiss. What we're talking about is the 10% question on the easements. This is a critical issue because we've been held up for a while on the one approved EH. And what we're asking is that before you do leave today, that you all make very clear the direction that three of you have already given, that the easements for the drainage pipes don't count as part of the 10%. It's part of our approved plan. It's consistent. If we need to amend the easements, Darren and I could probably do that in about 15 minutes. I don't think we do. There are already conservation easements in place that have these things as they're proposed on the Logan Ranch property. So hopefully today, you can give that clear direction. We will then move forward and start getting these things built. That's really all we ask for today.
Good morning, mayor and commissioners. My name is Jean Strojek. I am the national vice president planning with BB Living and we are the owner, developer of the Logan Ranch site there at Boynton Beach Boulevard and Acme Dairy Road. I am not here this morning to ask or request anything new in the preserve areas, but to ask you to provide staff with direction to approve what you already have, our site plan. So we can move forward and start construction that we're very excited about and to bring the essential housing to the market. We've been delayed probably four plus months on this issue. And again, we're very excited. We want to move forward. And again, we ask if you can approve so we can move forward. Thank you.
We have Dagmar Braz, Rick Roth, and David Shulson. Did I say that? Rick Roth.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Dagmar. I have been following the ag reserve and been a part of it since its inception. I just did want to let you know, if you need to have a question about schools, all you need to do is go out there. We have an elementary school. We have a middle school. We have a charter school that meets the needs of the middle school and the high school students in the area. We also have a school that's on Lyons Road in Happy Hollow. The school was constructed and it's actually abandoned. It was not successful. If somebody needs another school, I do believe they can go on that site. We don't need to do another study. Our biggest issue in the West Boynton area and also in the alliance area is the roads. You don't need to hire somebody to study the roads. We know what the problem is. Take the half a million dollars and let's throw it towards funding on widening Lyons Road and some of the other things that need to be done in the area. I do have a question, though. Oh, I did want to say real quick, the commercial that's in the ag reserve was always touted to be to meet the needs of the people who live in the ag reserve. We don't want to pull people that live east of the turnpike into the ag reserve because we might have a cooler 20 screen movie theater or something. We would like to keep the school, excuse me, the commercial the way it is, constricted to those two intersections. And also, please don't mess with the commercial cap. We do have all the needs that are being met right now. We have a grocery store. Actually, the third one's going in because the first two were not successful. So don't open up that commercial cap. We have what we need and also the location criteria, if we could keep that in place as well. The one thing I wanted to ask was the Logan property, which is our first, supposedly the first essential housing project that was approved. Why isn't the reserve at Atlantic considered a housing for essential housing as well? That's eight units to the acre. It's almost 500 units. Whenever we talk about essential housing and there is none, that project always seems to like just slip off the page. Could somebody explain to me why that 500 apartments on Atlantic Avenue is not considered essential housing? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Commissioners, glad to be with you here today. I'm going to start off by making a comment. We had a meeting of the Ag Enhancement Council last week and there was quite a bit of discussion about, you know, should the Ag Enhancement Council step up and be more involved in at least reviewing some of these amendments to the comp plan or changes in land use. And I think that's a very, very good thought to take. I think Stephen Basor is our chair and I think somebody said that he was actually put on the planning. So that's a great first step in that process. So I want to make a simple comment. If I had to boil it down, it would be this. Having sit here with you guys for 12 hours when we did the GL Homes Land Swap, remember that? And thank you, then Mayor Weiss and Commission for denying the swap. One thing I did learn, and I learned a lot today, one thing I did learn at that big event was the people that live in West Delray and West Boynton, and that'd be the Lions of Delray and all those other people, and the people that live in Loxahatchee and the farmers that farm in the ag reserve area, all have the same thought. We don't want any more congestion. Our problem in Palm Beach County is that we have not kept up with the pace of growth, particularly in my area of unincorporated Loxahatchee. I mean, that was clear in the presentation, how Loxahatchee was so far behind in keeping up with the roads because the people are moving in there so fast. So my point to you is, thank you for being careful, continuing to be careful. And I'll end on an agricultural point. Thank you for being careful to not rush to develop this land. There's something we talked about at the Land Swap that I want to reiterate also. And this is my perspective alone, but as a farmer, it's clear, somebody said the Gulf Stream, thank you very much. It's the weather. What makes Palm Beach County a great place to live? It almost never freezes in Palm Beach County. So this is some of the warmest land in the United States in the wintertime. And also you have the Lake Worth Drainage District, which does a great job of managing the water supply, keeping us from having saltwater intrusion problems. So when you have available water and great weather, this place is a great place to farm. And I'm going to make a prediction that there's going to be some different types of farming in the future in the ag reserve area. And one of the greatest things y'all can do is help us maintain that ability to grow agriculture in Palm Beach County. And one more plug for the Alliance of Delray, we need to encourage every homeowner to grow something in their back. something in their backyard, or under, in their apartment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning again, David Shulson, the Cobra delegate from Valencia Reserve, and I was glad to hear that the Commission doesn't feel it's necessary to spend money on a study. You've got a great staff, they did a great presentation, and I just want to touch just briefly on two issues, since it was next door to us. Valencia Reserve supports essential housing. Our issues are with density, building heights, but also, I just want everyone to understand, essential housing, I think, is a bit of a misnomer. The income tiers start at around $62,000 and go all the way up to $145,000. The rent difference for teachers, you know, firemen, policemen who are starting out, it's a little bit less in the lower-income tiers. There's really no difference when you hit $130,000, $140,000. So I think we keep you saying "essential housing." We support it, but let's be clear of what it really is. And then as far as the traffic issue, what I think the focus should be, and Mayor Sax has spoken to this, we've used the word "pause," could you stop until the county can catch up? And I think the issue for this Commission is, got a great staff in engineering, Joanne Keller couldn't be better at being responsive to when we asked what's going on. The latest update, for example, on Lyons Road is, there's a good chance the widening of Lyons Road from Boynton Beach to Flavor Pick onto Atlantic will not be completed realistically until the end of this decade. The widening of Atlantic to the Turnpike from 441, four or five years it's gonna take to get it done. And what we've discovered in recent months, is there is absolute gridlock already on Boynton Beach Boulevard, school drop-off and pickup times, this morning at 8 o'clock, as I was leaving, backed up almost halfway down to 441. And I think the focus should be on, just as someone said, somehow to really get going to whatever the funding is and get the projects going, because right now, it's gonna take quite a while to get it all done. So traffic, you've got a great idea with your, whatever it's, the transportation master plan is gonna cost some money, that's a great idea, and hopefully it'll create some good ideas in, as it's, as it evolves. But I just wanted to say that to you, and thank you again.
Thank you. Commissioner Sax, your light is on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we have exhausted all the cards, and I just want to make mention that, at the creation of the Ag Reserve, it was Cobras, Richard Carrington, Dagmar Braz and her family, and the Alliance with Lori Vinegar, and Fran Reich, West Boca Community Council. These are the leaders that helped with our staff, two of which are here, still here today, to create this most unique area of land in all of Florida. So I want to thank you all for what you've done, I think, thank you for being here today in these lengthy meetings, and I just, I am very proud to, I'm very proud to represent this area, and the people of this area, and, and to continue the hard work that was done 20, 30 years ago. Lisa, you were there, and Twee. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodward.
Thank you. Two quick issues that I was reminded of. One, the gentleman brought up school traffic, and this was something that I had in my discussion yesterday. I know there's a postponement for the item that this would have directly impacted, but we do know that there are a number of schools that are not absorbing their car line. And when we approve any of these, like, they have a transportation plan, they have a, a route that they show us, that's on their property, that they're supposed to absorb a car line. So my question is, as has been reported, I saw videos of it, and I, I see it around the county, but anytime we have a school that is blocking an entire lane of traffic for a half mi, however long it is, if they're blocking traffic on one of our roads, what is our solution to that?
Okay. Quasi, you can jump in, but I, I would say, anyone utilizing blocking a lane of traffic, if they were doing something, we would reach out to law enforcement, be it PBSO Incorporated or, you know, local law enforcement. But no, without approval, without a maintenance of traffic approved plan, blocking is not permitted.
And as far as the, the plan that they're supposed to have, I mean, would that be something where we have the ability to go on-site and see why, why they're not bringing cars onto their property, and instead blocking a lane of traffic?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, we can review their, you know, plans when they submitted, got their approval, and go out on-site and see whether they are following that plan or not. If not, then they will be cited as.
It's a charter school that, the one that was brought to my attention is a charter school, so I guess it wouldn't fall under the school district, or maybe it does, but either way, if we're approving the site plan, part of that plan is that they have to absorb their car line onto their property, get it, get them off of the road.
Correct.
And when they're not doing that, I mean, we have to have some method for enforcement.
And I do want to draw the distinction between a private school and a public school. Public school, we will see them, we will work with them on a traffic plan, that then becomes the responsibility of the on-site staff, and it has deviated from, at times, and we deal with those situations. Private schools, if it's unincorporated, or you have conditions of approval that require it, those are very enforceable.
Okay. Is, what was charter?
Sorry, I meant charter and private, anything non-school district, I meant to use the same.
Okay. Well, I would like to see us get a lot more proactive when these are brought to our attention, because it, it does, these areas are already congested, without having an entire lane of traffic blocked every morning and afternoon for school pickup or drop-off. So I, without any objection, I would like to initiate staff to get on these, please. And, and let the schools that are listening, if they're not listening, to, to be on notice. I mean, it may take us a while to get this done, but before next school year, I'd like to see them resolving this, so that they are absorbing their car lines onto their property, and not blocking our roads. Second thing, I did have a meeting, it was having discussion on lakes or, or water features on preserve, that's not considered part of drainage, where it's more of like a wetland feature or a nature type. What is our policy on that? Where it's not, it's not drainage, but it is a wildlife refuge or some sort of water?
So again, it depends on the future land use. If it is a regular 60-40 PUD, there are no excavation activity allowed in the preserve area. Some of the discussion that you've had, and that staff has, you know, been brought up to staff, is some of these excavations are for aesthetics and/or for building paths for the development area. So it really is talking about the activities that could occur on there. In those cases, we would defer back to the future land use amendment and any conditions and any allowances that would be done. In one case, we have done that, and we have specifically wrote in there's, as a requirement, that the fill stays on-site. And again, there are certain, you know, consideration at the time of future land use. For those that haven't had those special conditions written in there, they would have to do a future land use amendment, and it'll come before the board for that.
Okay. So there, there is an option to have that, it would just need to come to this board for consideration?
Unless it's already approved as part of the land use.
Yeah.
Do you want clarification?
Could I, could I ask the applicant that brought this to my attention to come forward? He didn't put in a card, but.
Sure.
Would that be allowed?
Good morning, Scott Beck, thank you. So, the issue that, that we just raised, we've been having discussions on, I think it's a simple issue, we, we are looking to dig a lake within the open space. I think the concern that's been raised relates to excavation. The conversations we've had, we've been having multiple discussions with staff, trying to figure out how to provide a lake within the open space, within the preserve area. Part of it, and as Twee just mentioned, the intention is to utilize a portion of that within the, within the development area, as part of the, the development of the project. So I, we, I think we're still having a hard time understanding why we can't move forward. It is, it's a lake with.
There's some water.
Excuse me. I'm okay, I'm okay. We're attempting to put a lake within, within the open space and within the preserve area, which is permitted within the conservation easement, we believe, under the existing land use. I think it's policy one, or objective 1.5. So I, I think the, the discussion that we've been having with staff, we've had it at multiple levels, is just trying to understand what would prevent, and this is for Atlantic Reserve, by the way, what would prevent us from incorporating and digging a lake to provide an additional amenity within the preserve area? A lot of the preserve areas within the agricultural reserve just kind of sit there, aren't necessarily utilized for any particular purpose. As I think was mentioned previously, the intention here is to build, I think, 114 workforce housing units within a larger apartment development, to have an additional amenity. And yes, at the same time, as Twee just mentioned, the excavation from the lake will be utilized, and I think it was just mentioned, will be utilized on-site. I mean, that is exactly the purpose. Been a number of these essential housing units that have been approved within the agricultural reserve for purposes, the essential housing element that was incorporated, yet, none have been built yet. And I think you just heard from Mr. Seymour on one of the projects, that there was an issue with, with the drainage easement. In our particular case, it's, it's, it's lake, it's, it's excavation, it's fill, no intention to take this fill off-site. I'm not sure if that was the, the reference that was maybe made by staff. The intention here is obviously to provide an additional amenity, to utilize the fill on-site, to help save dollars for an important essential housing project. So, sorry, it was a little rough there at the beginning, but I hope that helps explain the intention here. We, we don't see why this isn't permitted under the current future land use objectives. We have had conversations with staff, it may require an amendment to the ULDC as it relates to providing an exception for excavation purposes, and there's already a laundry list of those under Article 4. We would seek to simply add lakes, lakes within preserve areas, something along those lines, as an additional exception. It would seem to go hand-in-hand with the objectives, the goals, the policies of the future land use element, as well as supporting future essential housing projects within the county, so hope that helps clarify.
Did staff want to respond to help us with some clarity?
There's two issues. This particular project that's being discussed is a multiple land use. It was the first eight-units-per-acre gross apartment approved in the Ag Reserve. It's beautiful. I think we're all looking forward to being there and increasing the housing diversity in the tier. When that came through, it was required to have a 12-acre preserve area, and that preserve area was anticipated to be dirt. They now want to put, I think, four acres out of the 12 acres as a lake, and use that fill, as Mr. Backman explained, on the development area portion, and it will save money. It's an amenity lake, and right now, there's an issue of the applicability of that, or the allowability of that in the comp plan. And then number two, type two, that is called type-two excavation. When you dig a hole to do your development, that's the reference that we have in our code, and it's not allowed in a preserve area. So if that was something that the board or the applicant wanted to pursue, it would take a ULDC change. I don't know if it would need a comp plan change, but the question comes to mind is how much of the preserve area can be water? You know, the intent was for BBX, the Commerce, that the preserve area could have a portion that was water, and it had to have a recreated wetland, and it had to contribute to water quality and such, so just an amenity lake for the purpose of saving money on your fill, you know, that's questionable, because if everybody could just suddenly, you know, I mean, in this particular one, the preserve area and the development area are adjacent, and it would use the fill from the lake on the adjacent development area, but if every, you know, it seems like the Ag Reserve, the camel's nose under the tent, one person gets to start digging holes and using that fill, and then next thing you know, we're gonna get more and more and more and more. So if we're gonna go down that road, it should be very narrowly tailored, and related to EH or some sort.
I'm gonna say, thank you for bringing this discussion up. This is not something we're gonna decide today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sax.
Got so involved in that lake, I forgot what I was gonna ask. Kept thinking of all the good fishing that could happen in a lake like that. If I may, Mayor, go back to the issue of, and I think we spoke with our engineer about this, about the schools. It is horrendous. Calusa Elementary, let me name them. Calusa Elementary blocks up Clintmore Road, and these are elementary school kids. West Boca High School, same thing. Olympic Heights High School, so how in the heck did we ever approve these, without requiring the schools to have them pick up and, and let out inside their district, inside their, their space? So, yes, but I have to say that Joanne and engineering is working on this. There is actually a committee between the school district and our engineers, that work on transportation issues with the schools. So it is a mess. It is dangerous for the children, for the parents, and for the public. But I think that with our engineering staff, and Aaron, particularly, I mean, Joanne particularly working on it, that we're gonna get a solution. We have to, because we've overdeveloped, and then, oh, the roads. Oh, we forgot. That's not too, you know, beautiful to think about roads, we want to think about everything else. No, the roads are the first thing we get in, then we do the development. So this is what we have today, and that's just in my district. So I can imagine other districts, what they go through with regard to school. So I'm looking at my traffic engineer here, and we are working on it, and we will be very careful about any more development. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Flores, and then we're gonna bring this discussion to a close.
I, I just want to comment on, on the comments that Commissioner Sax just brought up about schools and, and the dialogue regarding it being, backing up into the streets. This happens everywhere in this county. Anytime there is the start of school, this, this, there is no magic bullet to this. Parents need to drop off the kid to then go to work. That's how it works in every single school, and it, no matter, it doesn't matter how much the lane is, it, it always happens, and there's unfortunately no magic bullet for this. But I, I want to make sure that people understand, this, this isn't just the Ag Reserve, that we, we, we deal with schools backing up into, into lanes. My district is one of the more denser districts, and I have schools everywhere. I mean, I think per, per, you know, square mile, I think I have the most schools in, in, in Palm Beach County. So it's, it's a deal that we all have to deal with every morning, and it's part of planning accordingly when, when we're going places. The same thing in the afternoon, the same thing that we have to plan for buses stopping to pick up children on and off. So these, these are problems that we, we all deal with in, in all of our districts. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. And back to why we're here and having this discussion, staff is looking for direction on whether we should do a study, and it sounds like the consensus of the board is no. I will throw my hat into the ring and say no also. So that would be, five of us up here said no to the study. As for the easements, I will throw my hat in the ring again and say no. So that was four of us that said, we were not interested in doing the easements the way it was written in here. So I think that is the direction that you are looking for. I don't believe we need any motions, but I do thank you for taking the time. As Commissioner Weiss, myself, and Commissioner Sax have heard multitudes of these presentations, you just heard me drop my Ag book over there, it's got like six of these in it. But I do want to say thank you for all, all that you did and put this together, and I look forward to our comprehensive transportation master plan, helping to answer the school traffic issue, along with all of the other traffic issues that we have in the county. So, thank you very much. Alrighty. And now we are, now on to 4A1. And just for everyone to know, we are gonna take a lunch break at 1:00 from 1:00 to 2:00.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Madam Mayor. For the record, Timothy Hanes, Environmental Manager.
For the record, Timothy Hanes, Environmental Manager of ERM. This item before you has come back a couple of times, and this is for amendments for lands purchased by the county at the request of ERM.
Okay, hold on one second.
Yes.
Does the board need a presentation? We're just putting lands in conservation. We've done this before. We're going to do it in the future, and we've heard this.
Is there a particular reason why this is for us to hear? Do you need direction or?
This is our final adoption, so.
This is the final adoption.
I like, I.
Heard it twice already.
Yeah. You've what?
We've heard this twice.
Okay.
I'm here to answer questions, should you have.
Okay. Then I guess we won't let you go through the whole thing, although.
Well, I would be looking for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Woodward, a second by Commissioner Weiss. All in favor, all opposed. This motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we know where to find you if we have questions.
Yes.
Oh, I apologize. Linda Smith, you have a card in. I think you're in support of this, right?
I'm in support. I'll be very brief. Thank you. And I'm very excited about.
Thank you. We're on to 5A1. Do we have cards on 5A1?
We do not have cards on.
Okay, perfect. All right.
5B.
5A1, farmworker housing text. Do we need a presentation?
Mayor, unless somebody wants a presentation, I'll make the motion to approve.
No, I do. No, no, this is an important issue for me in my district. The farmworker, yes, I would. Thank you.
Good morning. Bryce Van Horn with the Planning Division. So this is the proposed comprehensive plan amendment before you today, which is the farmworker housing revisions. This is a county-initiated proposed text amendment to revise several elements in the county's comprehensive plan in order to allow for additional opportunities for farmworker housing in the Glades tier. Just for a brief background for why this amendment is before you today, and of course, there's a far more detailed background on chronology in the report, but in summary, in May of 2023, the Board of County Commissioners initiated amendments to the county's Unified Land Development Code, or ULDC, directing zoning staff to bring back amendments to the code to allow for the expansion of farmworker housing opportunities, specifically, again, for the Glades region only. Further, in August of 2024, after staff review of the comprehensive plan policies, planning staff requested, and the board initiated comprehensive plan text amendments to facilitate the expansion of farmworker housing opportunities concurrent with the ULDC amendments. So these text amendments were needed due to provisions adopted in the comprehensive plan in the late '90s. First, farmworker housing required a minimum site acreage of 25 acres. Second, farmworker housing defined only as farmworker quarters, and the plan is only allowed on-site of an accessory to bona fide agriculture, so there's no offsite provision. Third, the plan only permitted farmworker housing in the agricultural production, or AP, special agriculture, or SA, and agricultural reserve, or AGR, future land use designations. So this proposed text amendment was initiated for the Glades area only, what is referred to often as the Glades region, or as adopted in our comprehensive plan, as the Glades tier, which you can see here on this map on the left. This map shows the Glades tier in the red boundary, generally west of 20 Mile Bend, out to Lake Okeechobee, and to the county's northern, western, and southern boundary. So when we're talking about the tier, that includes both the Glades RSA, or Rural Service Area, and the Glades urban suburban tier. And the urban suburban tier are the smaller red boundaries near the lake, generally around the cities. You see in gray there, Bohqui to the north, Bell Glade, and South Bay. And as you can see from the table on the right, which is unincorporated land area in the tier by future land use designation, there's over 830,000 acres in the tier. Much of it is conservation, future land use designation, which is the dark green area, which is over 340,000 acres, about 413 acres of park designation, and about 274 acres with transportation and utilities, or UT, future land use. And then outside the Glades urban suburban area is over 471,000 acres of agricultural production, or AP designated land, where farmworker quarters is currently allowed. And there's over 24,000 acres of land designated with other future land use within the urban, the Glades urban suburban tier. So this amendment proposes several, proposes to amend three elements in the county's comprehensive plan in order to implement the BCC's May 2023 direction to expand farmworker housing opportunities in the Glades tier, and will facilitate the provision of farmworker housing concurrent with those initiated ULDC amendments. So first, the proposed amendment would revise two policies in the housing element, policies 14C and 14D, to relocate and consolidate text related to farmworker housing into one single policy and delete the land use designations that farmworker housing is limited to. And also to relocate language related to general special needs housing into a single I'm sorry. Further, we would retain the 25-acre requirement only for the agricultural reserve, or AGR, future land use. And again, the AGR future land use is not in Glades tier, has a different set of requirements with respect to density and other criteria. So, and again, the amendment was directed for the Glades region only.
Hold on one second. Sure. Seems that Commissioner Sacks has her light on. And Vice Mayor, your light is on also.
Is that?
Yes.
I have a question. Thanks, Mayor. Before we get any further, on this amendment summary, this farmworker housing is very important to the folks in the Ag Reserve, but it's also very important to the folks in the Glades. My question is this. The additional definition is needed to establish farmworking housing as a new use allowed off-site from bona fide agricultural land. Could you explain, instead of just going over this, because I need to know if farming in the Ag Reserve can include farmworker housing?
Well, our analysis is not for the Ag Reserve tier.
I know it isn't. It's for the Glades, right.
Yes, farmworker quarters is allowed. It requires a 25-acre site. That farmworker quarters has to be on-site of a bona fide agricultural.
This is Ag Reserve now, not Glades. Okay.
There are density provisions in the Ag Reserve, both for straight AGR land use designation, and there's provisions that allow for farmworker quarters in a preserve area, but of course, that preserve area has to be 25 acres. It has to have bona fide agriculture, and it must retain density within that preserve area when it's put into preserve to allow for the farmworker quarters.
Okay.
So the provisions are a little bit different.
That's what I wanted to make sure, that the farmworker housing, I don't want to say accessory housing, but the farmworker housing in the Ag Reserve is part of this, but it is different than what we have for the Glades area.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. That's what, thanks, Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So again, the proposed amendment will also revise the introduction and administration element, to add a definition for farmworker housing. And again, currently, the INA defines farmworker quarters and further defines that use as one or more residential structures located on the site of a bona fide agricultural use and occupied by year-round farmworkers employed by the owner of the farm. So we're proposing an additional definition to establish farmworker housing as a new use allowed off-site from bona fide agricultural land while retaining still the farmworker quarters as an existing accessory option. So we're also proposing to revise the future land use element, basically to expand the allowable future land use designations. This will be in part to establish that farmworker housing is allowed in conjunction with bona fide agricultural operation, including within the Glades urban suburban tier. It would, again, retain the use as allowed accessory to bona fide agricultural land, establish farmworker housing use as an allowed principal use on land that is not bona fide agricultural, subject to certain criteria that would be further regulated in the ULDC, and those ULDC amendments are still being worked on. And also provide that the use is allowed in the tier, and that's the entire tier, in any future land use designation, with the exception of those future land use designations that I specified in the table, conservation, utilities and transportation and utilities, or UT, and park. So staff is recommending approval. The Planning Commission recommended approval, 9 to 0, at its May 9 public hearing. So the motions before you today are, one, to receive and file the business impact statement, and then, two, to transmit the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sacks.
Sir, what, if anything, will the law going through the state legislature now with accessory housing or farmworker housing, will that apply to what we do here today?
Well, I think I'll defer to maybe.
The lawyers?
Lisa.
Mayor, may I answer that?
Sure.
So the law going through the legislature right now is to onsite farmworker housing. This is specifically to offsite.
That's correct. If the law is signed, it is kind of moot for, you know, any changes that we're doing, but the Commissioner is correct.
So if the law's not signed?
Then we need the ULDC amendments that are moving in tandem with this one. We need them more than ever.
So this is a first step towards that?
Correct.
Right, Lisa? Thank you very much. Thank you, sir, for the presentation.
Thank you. And a reminder that this is to transmit. So we had a motion and a second, all in favor, all opposed. See that that motion carries 6-0.
Mayor, I'd also like to make the motion. I got you, Darren.
Okay.
To receive and file the business impact statement.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor, all opposed. See that that motion also carries 6-0. Thank you very much. Okay. We are now on to privately proposed tier change, 5B1. Staff, you're having a good time today, right? All righty. Vice Mayor Baxter, this is your district. Would you like a presentation?
No, I don't need a presentation on this.
We have one card. Linda Smith.
I'm going to be very, Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida. Going to be very brief. Again, this is just kind of a question with housing and things like that. I know this is going to go through. Looks like it'd be a good place for resident doctors and nurses for housing, but it's 18.8 acres that are being approved with conditions, so.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve this item, but briefly, I just want to point out, this isn't for housing. This is for an institutional use of the hospital expansion and parking.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got lots of seconds. So we had a motion by the Vice Mayor, a second by Commissioner Weiss. All in favor, all opposed. See that that motion carries 6-0. We are now on to 5C1. Do we have cards on 5C1? No cards, okay. Would anyone like a presentation on 5C1? Commissioner Weiss?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, I want to thank staff, I want to thank the applicant for bringing this item forward. This is to develop affordable housing on a house of worship site, so very much appreciate the partnership. And so with that, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to move this.
I have a motion.
With conditions as, and this is a transmittal.
Fourth.
I have a motion in many seconds. Commissioner Woodward's the first second. So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? See that that motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
We are now on to 5D1, Wellington Vista, Phase 2. We have no cards. Vice Mayor, any comments?
I do. Mayor.
Would you like a presentation?
Can we get a very short presentation on this?
I can certainly keep it as quick as possible.
Okay, thank you.
I'll skip over a couple of things. Good evening, good evening, goodness. Good morning. Brian Terry on the record, Insight Studio, here on behalf of the applicants. We're here to speak about the Wellington Vista development. This is a large-scale land use application request. It's on the west side of Lake Worth Road and the turnpike, or south side of Lake Worth Road, west side of the turnpike. It's a total of 30 acres as part of the development application. We're here to really talk about three acres that we're requesting land use amendment for. It's, the 27 acres is an existing community called Wellington Vista. Again, 370 units that are developed in that, in that community. It went through the approval process back in 2018, ultimately was built in the 2021, approximately whenever the community was finalized, and fully leased out and active today. Again, we're here to talk about a land use amendment to modify what was approved at that same time, the change from the three acres that's fronting on Lake Worth Road that was commercial high. So we modified the land use for the entire 30 acres, 27 of it to HR8, the three acres that's fronting on Lake Worth Road to commercial high. And we'd like to amend that now to go back to a residential use, be consistent with the existing land use of the community that's to the south, and merge those two together to make one cohesive community. Again, the land use map, you can see the three acres on the top has the red, it is the commercial high land use. And again, just as I explained here, really, the sort of the breakdown of how that was approved. What's important to talk about here is the commercial use itself. Again, that three acres was approved for approximately 13,000 square foot daycare. You had 2,500 square foot of a fast food restaurant, a drive-through, as well as the 2,500 square foot office that was a part of that. So those commercial approvals were a part of the application when we came through back in 2018. Those trips, the traffic, everything was vested together and ultimately approved. So again, what we're proposing, when we're taking a modification of that existing commercial approval, the commercial land use and those uses that were proposed, converting that to the 100 residential units, which we're requesting ultimately through the site plan application process, we are doing a significant reduction of the intensity, as well as the density or traffic trips on the property. Real briefly, touch on, this is how we get to the density. Again, it's based on the total of the 30 acres, because they're being combined together now. So you see the HR8 land use, plus we're using the two programs, obviously, that the county prefers, the utilization, the TDR program for the two units per acre, as well as the workforce housing bonus density, and we're asking for the 5.5 units per acre in bonus density. So again, the whole community, 370 existing units, we're adding 100, for a total of 470 units on the property. Workforce housing, there are already a significant number of units on the site. We have 70 that are on the existing property, operational, in the marketplace, being utilized. We're proposing, or there will be a 27% requirement on this property for the three acres, for the new 100 units. The county will, and we will be providing 27%, or 27 workforce units, for a total of 97 within the overall development. This is some history. I can try. I can try to move past a lot of this. I don't know how relevant it really is. Again, these are the previous ordinances and approvals. We did have a series of roadway improvements that we had to do as we were going through that process, and ultimately building Hooks Road, which is Hook's Road, is privately maintained by us, and different improvements that were all associated with Lake Worth Road, turn lanes, U-turns, all components that, again, are, were, were part of the overall approval, which included those commercial trips. So again, we're downgrading that requirement. This is within our near or adjacent to the Lake Worth corridor master plan area. There was some interconnectivity requirements that were part of the overall community, which have all been constructed and built. And again, a reduction in traffic trips. I'm trying to expedite my conversation here, and we do meet all the criterias that were outlined by staff in the, in the staff report. I think what is, there are a series of conditions of approval we're proposing to amend. We're certainly in agreement with everything that's in the staff report and in the conditions as being proposed to be modified, and we do have staff to support. We had 8O recommendation at the LPA hearing, planning commission hearing, and we think this is a great opportunity. You know, there's a lot of discussion here, obviously, this morning about development and density and intensity in portions of, in the ag reserve and western portions. This is a great opportunity to see density placed directly adjacent to the Florida Turnpike along Lake Worth Road, where the services, the utilities, everything is there and functioning to accept this development and make it successful. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
If you don't mind.
Vice Mayor?
How many stories are you proposing to be built here?
We're proposing five stories.
And the closest, highest building to this area?
I believe the Hampton Inn, which is across the street, is four stories.
Other than a hotel?
Um, I mean, I think that is the, the three stories that are part of the Wellington Vista community that's directly...
That's already part of your community.
That is part of our community. That's correct.
I'm not a huge fan of high density, especially with impacts. And we briefly went over studies of the traffic and so on. I really would feel better about this project if you guys would agree to limit it to three stories instead of five. It just really, I think, is going to be a huge, it's not going to be compatible to the surrounding area, in my personal opinion. If my other commissioners like it, I'll leave it to them, but this isn't one I'm a fan of, the way it sits currently.
Understood. I mean, I think one of the comments that we, we know that we have a concurrent zoning application that's going to come forward, we'll have that opportunity. Our staff is still reviewing that application as well, and we're working through comments. So we'd like to continue through that process, and then we get in front of you guys, hopefully at a time of adoption, and you're reviewing the site plan, you're seeing the architecture, you're seeing it all together. Hopefully, it'll all come together.
And at this time, this is just a transmit, so there will be a couple more bites at the apple. Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor just mentioned, this is just transmittal. I encourage the applicant to continue dialogue with our district commissioner, who's got some concerns, but I'll go ahead and make a motion to move this.
I have a motion and a second. The second was from Commissioner Flores. Commissioner Sax, your light is on.
Does, is your district, the vice mayor, do you approve of this?
And not as it sits.
Okay.
Commissioner Woodward?
Thank you. So just so I understand, you were making the commitment, because this is just transmittal, to continue to work with the district commissioner through this process?
We're happy to continue talking about it, and again, as we move through the zoning process, continue that dialogue, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have no more lights on, so at this time, I'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? See that the motion carries six-zero. But remember, this is only transmittal. It means a lot can happen.
Thank you.
All right, we are now at Park West Commerce, five-E, one, and we have, how many cards?
We have 29 speaking cards, five non-speaking.
Vice Mayor Baxter, your light is on.
Mayor, you had mentioned earlier, we're going to break for lunch right around 1:00. So if we could limit the time, maybe to, I mean, that's 29 cards, so people don't have to come back after an hour lunch, so they're here, been here all morning. I would like to ask that we limit the, if you wouldn't mind limiting the time potentially to one minute?
Why?
No? You'd rather come back after, I mean, at 29 cards?
This is not a conversation with...
It's an hour and a half.
This is not a conversation. This is a conversation between the commissioners. I've got everybody up in arms. This is going to be a long discussion.
Or split the difference.
Or split the difference. Actually, I do like the idea. We have done it in the past, and it is through the mayor's discretion how long we allow, and I will, I would say that I think two minutes would be fine for, for folks to speak.
Mm-mm.
And thank you, Commissioner Sax. I understand your opinion.
No, I haven't given it yet, but I will when you allow me to.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Because I heard you're...
I, I think that actually, we should, we always break for lunch about 12, and if we broke for lunch now, then we could do this all in one sitting, and I know Commissioner Powell will be back by 1:00. So that would give his people, his residents, an opportunity to speak on this. Secondly, we have folks here who have been sitting here all day, they're community leaders. To limit them to two minutes is a disservice to their service to the community. So, yes, one, I would move that we have break for lunch when we usually do at 12. That way, we take these next two issues, which are, pertain to the same applicant, is that right, Ms. Morton? Same applicant, together, because I think that's fair to the applicant. And secondly, that we, that we do not limit public opinion on any issue unless it's something unusual. So that's my opinion, and I would move for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Baxter?
So I have a hard stop at 1:00. So I appreciate that we're not breaking for lunch until 1:00. And so what I am hearing, and I would like to say, so it's either going to be Commissioner Powell isn't here, or I'm not here. So either way, somebody isn't going to be here. I would like to be here and continue this and hear the arguments and hear what the residents have to say.
Okay, then. So it is up to the mayor as to how long we take for question, I mean, excuse me, comment? And it has always been the mayor's discretion, and when Commissioner Sax was mayor before me, there were times where she limited it to one or two minutes. So again, this is at mayor's discretion. We did say that we were going to take a break for lunch at 1:00, and it is also the mayor who sets the time for lunch, and I have done 12:00, 12:30, 1:00. It's usually where there's a break in the action, but since we did already announce that we're going to take a lunch break at 1:00, we're going to go ahead and start the conversation. And we will be limiting cards to two minutes when we get to the cards. Thank you. So we're going to have a presentation?
Note my objection for the record on the issue, especially for public comment.
Noted.
Because I like it. I like public information. We are here to serve the public, to limit their conversation, I think is a disservice to them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour.
Still morning, right?
No, it's seven minutes after 12.
Do I ask silly questions like that? Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission. Very surprising to see me here, I'm sure. My name is Brian Seymour. I'm an attorney with the Gunster Law Firm, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I've recently been added to the team for this project, in no small part to do what I'm about to do, which is to walk through a little bit of some background particularly related to commerce. I know you heard some of it, but since I helped draft it, and I was involved deeply in it, I wanted to go through a little bit. We're here, the applicant is Morning Star Nursery. I know you've seen them here many times before with much...
I'm going to stop you for just one second. This is a reminder to all in the audience, this is a transmittal. It is nothing more than that. That is what we are discussing, whether we're going to transmit this. Again, when we transmit something, there's always room in between to talk about it. I'm just reminding the audience, this is a transmittal. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Well, you stole a little bit of my thunder there, Madam Mayor, because we do represent Morning Star Nursery in this transmittal, and this does go to the state of Florida. This does get reviewed by the DOT. It does get reviewed through the process. There is subsequently going to be site plan discussions. The commerce land use, when it was adopted, very specifically said, you have to put your site plan in when you put your land use in, so that after transmittal, when it all comes back together, after the zoning commission has reviewed, after you have all of the recommendations of approval, you can make a final decision. So yeah, we are here on the transmittal. We have a tremendous team with us here today, Simmons and White, the engineers, you're going to hear some traffic things. Obviously, Quasi is here, and he can answer those for you as your staff. Brian Kelly is also here with us. Jennifer Morton, who you hear from in a moment. We also have tremendous architects at Ware Malcolm, and then the good-looking guys from Gunster show up on occasion as well. Today, they sent me instead. So this is the location, as you all know, of the site. It is right off the Turnpike on Atlantic, which, believe it or not, is a great spot if you're going to be talking about trucks and traffic, because they have very little room that they have to be on Atlantic Avenue. They don't have to go all the way to State Road 7, some may, but this is a great site for commerce. It was something that was actually discussed, which I'll show you in a second. But this is about Mr. O'Keane and his family as well. These are legacy farmers. They have been here since the early 80s. They purchased, Mr. O'Keane first purchased their parcel in 1981. I first met Mr. O'Keane when I had hair in about 2004, it's probably actually about 2001 or 2002, when the DOT came calling him to take 20 acres of his farmland for the interchange that now exists at Atl...I don't think that was...Commissioner Flores is ready to get rid of me quickly. That's, that's not fair. So, and currently, this is a full timeline, but currently, what he has is just some field-grown materials and some cow pasture out there. So I want to talk real quickly about commerce. I know most of you were here when the commerce was adopted. It took us about a year to go through that process. Lisa left, but she was part of that as well. And we spent a lot of time trying to figure out what it was, how it was going to work, and what the rules would be. What's important, though, is at that time, this map was shown. That identifies, based on the strictures that are within the commerce land use for the location, what parcels would be appropriate for commerce. And what you can see is that the parcels you're going to hear about today were known and identified. The objections you're going to hear, I'm sure, today were known and identified. But we have thought about this, and this was one of the ideas as to where commerce would be appropriate. So what is commerce? Commerce is meant to be light industrial with low-chip generating uses. It doesn't matter anything else that is discussed until you get to a site plan. What we are asking you today is to do this. Transmit the low-generating uses, the light industrial type uses. So you're going to hear about things that really are not before you today, because this is what the land use would actually do. This is what the land use will not do. I am sure you're going to hear the phrase "distribution facility" or "distribution center." That is not a phrase that is used in a vacuum. That is a phrase that is specified and defined in your code. And this is what it says. Most importantly, no matter what else happens, a transmittal today will not allow a distribution facility in this land use or on this property. Again, the site plan will go through. It's not yet final. It hasn't been reviewed by the zoning commission. It's not fair to get into the details of a site plan before your whole process goes forward. The way this works, transmittal has to come, and then we bring everything back together. But this land use will not allow for commerce, land use, right? It will not allow for the distribution facility that you may hear about later. So why commerce? Well, we talked a little bit about some of the history, but one of the main reasons is the need. Because currently, this is the Cushman and Wakefield Q1 data for this year, your vacancy rates for Boynton Beach are 1.4% and 1.1% for the types of uses that are allowed within the commerce land use. That is an extraordinarily low rate. That means people have to go somewhere else, they have to drive further, they have to do more, and they pay more because there's no competition for the supply. So what we're trying to do is actually allow for what is needed in this particular area. So I know it's late, I know we got to get moving, so what I'm going to do is shut up and turn it over, Ms. Morton, to go through the details.
Thank you, Brian. Jennifer Morton with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture, and I'm going to discuss the technical standards by which our application was reviewed and recommended for approval by your planning staff. The specific request that you have before you today is to change the future land use from agricultural reserve to commerce with an underlying agricultural reserve. As you look at the aerial, you will see the Park West site outlined in yellow. We have 650 feet of frontage along Atlantic Avenue and a half mile of frontage along the Florida Turnpike and Starkey Road. Atlantic Avenue is a major east-west corridor in the ag reserve. As you review the Atlantic Avenue corridor, you will see a mix of land uses, including the industrial node on both the north and south sides of Atlantic Avenue, east of State Road 7. I point this out because the industrial land use allows both light and heavy industrial uses. This is one of the reasons staff developed the commerce land use category, to allow for only light industrial uses. As you look at the corridor, you see a mix of industrial, commercial low, ag, and MLU land use designation. The proposed commerce is consistent with the mixture of land uses along the corridor. In addition, because of the Turnpike frontage and the fact that the property is located and surrounded by three roadways, commerce makes a logical, makes logical sense as an appropriate land use category. This aerial identifies the existing developments along Atlantic Avenue and further justifies why light industrial uses are compatible and appropriate for the Park West property. Again, beginning at the 441 and Atlantic Avenue intersection, we see Herbigger, a major manufacturing facility and corporate headquarters being developed. East of 441, you have office warehouses and auto repair, storage facilities. Even the Catholic Diocese owns land for Queen of Peace and housing for the nuns. There is an old public storage building, and then we have our new Reserve at Atlantic First Multifamily Project to be approved in the ag reserve. We have commercial, we have publics, we have Joseph's Market, we have retail, we have farmland, and we have self-storage. The proposed Park West Commerce project is appropriately located and meets the needs, as Brian mentioned, by providing needed space to serve the residents of the agricultural community. The Park West Commerce project is consistent with the commerce land use requirements, which is why your professional staff is recommending approval. When the commerce land use category was adopted, the Board of County Commissioners, along with the planning staff, crafted strict language so that the ag reserve was not inundated with commerce. We comply with all five requirements for being able to request commerce. The first requirement, properties are no longer permitted to request industrial, which allows for both heavy and light industrial uses. Commerce is the only land use allowed because of the light industrial nature of the commerce designation. Commerce is limited to parcels that have frontage and access on Atlantic Avenue, Boynton Beach Boulevard, and State Road 7, north of Rio Grande Avenue. Park West has both access and frontage on Atlantic Avenue. There is also a requirement for a concurrent zoning application and site plan. So at the adoption hearing, hearing of the commerce land use, the zoning and site plan are approved at the same meeting. The application before you is just for transmittal. You will review the site plan together with the land use at time of adoption, which is why the requirement is here. We have several months to continue our efforts to work with the neighbors and commit to doing so. The requirements on size limit commerce to between 3 and 50 acres. The language also requires a planned development zoning district, so that the zoning application will include a site plan. In addition, the preserve requirements of 40% less the 16 acres will provide for 13.7 acres of preservation on... for 13.7 acres of preservation on Park West. In general, as you review the proposed request, you will find that your professional staff has indicated that Park West is consistent with the comp plan. We meet all the commerce land use criteria as described. We meet the specific ag-tier policies, such as low-impact development, which uses, with uses that serve the residents of the ag reserve. The proposed commerce land use request is compatible with the Atlantic Avenue corridor and is compatible with the uses along Starkey Road, as will be evidenced by our letters of support. The ag reserve master plan always contemplated employment centers for the Boynton Beach Boulevard and Atlantic Avenue Turnpike Intersections. Finally, and very important, we meet all public facilities requirements, including traffic. This is the fourth land use change request that has been submitted for this property, and this is the only request to not need a 3.5D exemption. As a reminder, policy 3.5D establishes long-range traffic requirements. If a project needs a 3.5D exemption, that means that the project cannot meet the projected traffic. This project meets the long-range traffic standards. Finally, this commerce request is the only request to have support from your professional planning staff, and it is the only request that has not needed text amendments and zoning changes. Speaking of traffic and why we do not need the 3.5 exemption, I'd like to show you some traffic numbers. This chart identifies the existing daily trips for the commerce land use request. As you can see, the prior mixed-use project generated almost double the proposed commerce max traffic. To break that down even further, the proposed zoning application generates 2,499 trips. That is a reduction of 8,579 less trips. That's a 77% decrease than the previously proposed mixed-use application. And the prior mixed-use project needed many text amendments and a 3.5D exemption. As with every project, this team works with the community. We reach out, have community meetings to share about the project and to gain input. Because this is only transmittal, we can continue these efforts and will commit to doing so. We have had meetings with the Alliance and with Delray Lakes Estates. Those meetings were productive, and we had good dialogue. During the time between transmittal and adoption, we will have additional opportunities to meet and discuss the project. We have also worked hard to get letters of support from the longstanding nurseries and farmers located along Starkey Road. We have submitted letters to staff. For example, we have support from Brad Spedding. Brad owns the largest nursery in Palm Beach and Broward County. He has, we estimate, he does $25 million in business and serves companies such as Disney, Universal, Busch Gardens, garden centers like Home Depot and Lowe's. Second, the Bedner family, a three-generation farming family, wrote a letter of support because of the alignment of Starkey and Persimmons. And yesterday, you received a letter from Kevin Costello of K&amp;M Nursery in support of the project. We also have support from Pro Gardens. In conclusion, we meet the requirements for the commerce land use request. Your professional staff is recommending approval, and we respectfully request the board vote to transmit the application, and we commit to having further meetings with the residents and anyone that wants to meet. We're all available to answer any questions that you may have.
Staff, anything to add?
No, if there's any questions from board, we do have a presentation, but I don't think it's needed with the thorough presentation that's been given. But if there's any questions, our staff is willing to answer. Dorian Bellosa is our staff that's the project manager for this.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi. Oh, I heard something about commerce not being part of a distribution center. Does commerce allow for a distribution center or not?
It does not. That's in the unified land development code.
Okay, so what is it that they plan to put there if it's commerce?
They're looking at warehouse with accessory office.
Warehouse?
Mm-hmm.
One warehouse?
It's several buildings as proposed right now.
Several buildings. How much, how many square footage?
Let me double-check on that.
At this time, is that part of the process?
It's related to the maximum potential of the site, but it's up to you if you'd like me to continue.
Go right ahead.
Okay. So, they are proposing 150,000 square feet of self-service storage.
150,000?
Mm-hmm.
Square feet of storage?
Mm-hmm.
Air-conditioned?
I would believe so.
Air-conditioned, right? Okay, so, that's it?
There's more.
Okay, there's more?
So, a little over 30,000 square feet fitness center?
30,000 square feet of a fitness, but let's go back to the storage.
Okay.
Okay. Air-conditioned. Wouldn't that include produce to be stored there?
Well, I believe this is intended, you know, for more of the residential self-storage that happens.
So it wouldn't be for agricultural uses, it would be for, like, if I have too much shoes or something, I'd put them in a storage unit, right?
I don't think it could, would preclude it. You know, the warehouse component of it could have that agriculturally-related storage, though.
Okay. And the, so there wouldn't be any trucks, right? And we're not talking about trucks going in through Starkey?
Not for the self-service storage.
None?
Yeah.
How do you, how can we say "no trucks"? When I went to a self-storage, we had a truck, we took the stuff out, you put it in the storage, came back. So, is this only for personal uses, the storage units?
You may want to hear from the applicant about...
No, I want to hear from staff, because you approved this.
Sure.
So you know this better than anybody else, and I'm trying to get information.
Correction.
I've read over this, but I want to make sure that the storage units are only used for personal use, no commercial uses.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I make a recommendation that staff does its presentation? I think maybe some of these questions would be answered by this.
Okay. It's up to the mayor.
I don't believe that we're actually talking about the buildings themselves right now in the transmittal.
So, we have that information, we have the information on the buildings. I think to make a holistic decision, it is appropriate for the board to consider that information. So, I would recommend that if staff has that information, to present it to the board.
I will bring up the petitioner.
So, just, the problem with the way this is working is we don't have that answer completely. We have a plan that has not been fully vetted and reviewed by your zoning staff, that is not yet final, and has not been reviewed by the zoning commission. So if you hear about current, it is just what's currently there, and it may change by the time you see it later. And as Jennifer said, we're going to continue to work with the neighbors. We still are going to continue to work with DOT. We're going to go through this process. So, you may hear it, but it may not be what you finally see, because it can change as the iterative process moves forward, which is why we had to separate transmittal and then ultimately everything coming back together, so that none of it finally gets approved, even the land use, until we have that detail.
Thank you.
If I may, Mayor, I think it's up to you whether we have a staff report.
From hearing what the staff said, it doesn't add anything to what has already been done.
Okay, so, let me go back to my question. We have 150,000-square-foot storage facility that will be limited only to residential, no commercial, storage at that 150,000-square-foot storage facility?
Just for clarification, it's for more or less residential type of users that come in, like you had said?
For my shoes.
Or if you're moving, if you're moving from...
It's important, you know. You know.
From a larger unit to a smaller unit, you know, you would require some moving vans, but it's not the tractor-trailer type of use that occurs that you're looking at. There'll be some trucks moving, trucks that you rent from some of those truck rental places, but it's not, you know, when you say "no trucks," it's, there's different trucks that are going to be on the site.
There are trucks, and then there are trucks. So what you're saying is that these are, these are truck trucks, not big, big, large tractor-trailer trucks?
But...
Correct?
But again, depending on the uses that are in here that will be further reviewed by the zoning division, there could be trucks that services some of the other uses on-site, not just the self-service storage.
So, what we're saying basically is we don't know what will go there. We know there's 150,000-square-foot building, but we, and you're, we, we're Palm Beach team here, we don't know if that's going to be commercial, if it's going to be only for residential uses, if it's going to be trucks or big trucks at this time. Is that, is that the answer? And that's fair?
There'll be trucks on-site.
There'll be trucks on-site.
The use and the size of the trucks, it's dependent on the uses that we propose further down the line in the zoning application.
How many years has Morningstar been in production? Staff does not know? And that's okay, I don't need to ask. He's a good farmer, Mr. Simmons, he could tell you. But, no, it's okay, it's okay. So we don't know how long it's been in production, and we don't know what it produces?
From what I've, from what I know, about 30 to 40 years.
Okay.
Probably at minimum.
And it's still in production today?
So nursery goods, plants.
And it's still producing agricultural goods today?
There are agricultural uses on the site, yes.
Okay. And how many acres of agricultural uses are on this parcel that we want to change from ag to commerce? How many, how many acres are we looking at?
So, maybe a better question for the applicant again, but the site is 50 acres, and I believe a majority of it is in agricultural uses.
So 50 acres of agriculture that we want, or that somebody wants to change to, to commerce. And when they talk about light industrial or heavy industrial on commerce, thank you, Mayor, if you don't mind if I have all these questions.
Well, I know you're going to ask questions. I just want to make sure that the questions are pertinent to the fact that this is a transmittal.
You better believe it, yeah.
That is my caveat for your questions.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I appreciate it very much. The, actually, the applicant himself, or the agent for the applicant, talked about light and heavy industrial uses. What are they as defined in our code?
So they're actually defined in the comp plan. So heavy uses would be things that create, you know, noxious smells or chemicals, and then the light industrial uses are more, we have some uses in the code that are allowed, contractor storage yard, data and processing, warehouse uses.
So a distribution center would not be in...
Correct.
Not be in there?
Distribution centers are not allowed in the commerce designation.
Industrial and commerce are two different things.
Right.
It's commerce, this is not industrial.
Industrial could allow those heavy industrial uses, whereas commerce is limited to light.
Okay, but I think the agent for the applicant talked about light and heavy industrial uses at this site.
Oh, no, not at this site. He was just trying to explain the difference between the two.
So, for sure, there will be no trucks distributing goods into this 150,000-square-foot building that is, is ready for this site?
Well, they may have trucks coming into the site that are then added to the warehouse, and then smaller trucks could potentially be taking the goods out.
Okay, thank you. No further questions at this time.
Commissioner Woodward? No? Okay. We're going to take about a half an hour's worth of cards, so, and we're going to do two minutes each, and Commissioner Woodward will stop at 1 o'clock. We said we were going to stop at 1:00, we will take a break at 1:00 and continue after that.
We have two microphones, if you could line up. We have David Larson, Joe O'Donnell, Patty Benton, and Barbara O'Donnell. Start.
Thank you. I have some handout for the commissioners as part of, in support of my comments.
And please state your name when you come to the microphone.
The recommended park...
Your name, sir?
My name is David Larson. I live in Wellington, please. The recommended Park West North is ill-conceived and inconsistent with a letter in spirit of the master plan and should be denied. Specifically, there is no immediate need. There's over 1 million square feet of industrial space that is already approved and under construction, unleashed. 225,000 of that is just one and a half miles west. Two, the proposal has two critical traffic-related faults. One we're aware of, there is no plan for egress or ingress to and from the facility off Atlantic Avenue. There's no traffic signal recommended for this facility. There's no entrances and exits from the facility onto Atlantic Avenue. But here's the big one, number two. Warehouse space is subject to high levels of variance in usage and traffic levels. This was not always the case, but with the emergence in e-commerce, this poses a very high risk. The level of traffic to be generated cannot be reliably determined, and here is why. A 2014 study showed that e-commerce warehouse space has the potential to increase traffic levels five-fold over normal warehouse space. In 2021, e-commerce represented 40% of all warehouse use, and that has been growing every year. Today, virtually every business, every business is implementing an e-commerce strategy. If the traffic division's estimates are wrong by even 20%, it will exceed the currently allowed traffic levels. Developers' plans show they expect very high traffic demands in this facility.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
I have a question. Who's standing next?
Joe O'Donnell.
Hi. I have a question, Madam Mayor. Sir, I didn't get your name, and I don't know where you live.
David Larson. I live in Wellington.
How long have you lived here in Palm Beach County, sir?
It's 1996.
Okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Mr. O'Donnell, you're next, and then Benton, and then O'Donnell, right? Please take both microphones, we're not going to have a delay, we'll just take the time off from other people.
And then Lindsay O'Donnell will be following as well.
Good morning. Before I start, please, could you stop the clock?
Mr. O'Donnell, your time is running.
All right. I unfortunately feel like this is being a railroad, and this is just being pushed through, that several of you, and I've never, ever felt this way before, have committed yourselves to getting this project done, and you don't intend to give us a fair hearing. For example, we just heard the applicant spent 16 minutes, and I get two. And I'm talking about a group called SARAH, 14 farms and ag businesses, and I'm talking about the four farms that totally disagree with what the other farmers want on Starkey and also sent letters to you, but no one talks about that stuff. And talking about a distribution center or not, why did they pay to develop these drawings if that isn't what's on their mind? 770,000, not 150, 770,000 square foot of a commercial space, 550,000 of it, a distribution center?
Not a distribution center, but continue.
An example of what I was saying earlier. Let me start with a conclusion. This is really a bad idea. Approval of this puts Irish acre survival in jeopardy, and the three other farms on Starkey that feel the same way I do. The Board of County Commissioners has already approved a million square feet of warehouse space in the ag reserve that's being constructed within three miles of this site. I was involved with preparing the commerce CMR, and in no one's wildest imagination, did we anticipate there would be 1.6 million square feet of storage space within three miles. miles. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell, you've appeared before this board numerous times.
I have.
Even a short period I've been here, I've seen you numerous times. Would you explain and describe Irish Acres? What is Irish Acres? Is it in Dublin or is it here in the ag reserve?
We try to make it look like it's in Dublin. Irish Acres is a horse sanctuary. We're considered one of, if not the, best boarding facility in all of South Florida, bar none. Irish Acres is a critical part of the equine industry in Palm Beach County because we are the only facility south of Ocala that provides surgical rehabilitation for horses. This is key to Wellington and their competition with Ocala. This is key to our major customers, Gulfstream Race Track, Palm Meadows, who's the largest training site for thoroughbreds in the whole country, and that's in Boynton Beach, and then Rude and Riddle, who's the largest equine vet firm in the country with an operation in Wellington. All of these, all of these firms use us as their rehabilitation go-to after surgery for horses. And again, it's a critical aspect of Palm Beach County's multi-billion dollar equine facility.
So you would say then that Irish Acres is like a important rehab center for top-notch horses from Wellington as well as Ocala for them to rehabilitate?
From Wellington and from the thoroughbred world, which would be Gulfstream Race Track and Palm Meadows.
And these horses rehabilitate in Irish Acres, which is what you, which is what you want?
That is correct.
Right? Okay, very good.
It takes intensive care and, in the rehabilitation process. And I, you, the commissioners that agreed to meet with us received letters from each of our major customers, the names I mentioned, and those letters indicated their very deep concern about semi-trailer trucks being near $100,000-plus horses as they're rehabilitating. It's a really big deal.
The, you showed, and I didn't really quite get what you were talking about when you showed those frames that you have. What are those? I, I don't know what it is.
These are drawings that the applicant had their consultants where McComb and Morton prepare.
Could, could we have those, I don't want to say received in evidence, but I wonder if they could be part of your testimony today, sir?
Absolutely.
But before that, could you just tell me what they are? What they purport to be?
This is a drawing that shows this, sorry, it's what I have.
Hold on just one second. Twee?
If I may add, that looks similar to exhibit 11, what was included in your, in your packet.
It's the proposed site plan in the zoning application.
Okay. This is part of our record right here, what he's showing us. Good, okay. Go right ahead, sir. It makes it even more important for me to know what it is.
It's hugely important because we border with small Starkey Road in between this development. And I, I heard what was said, however, here, I don't know why they would present it if it's not what they intend to do as an exhibit, here, there is a store, there is a warehouse/distribution center.
47.
Listen to this number, 180 loading docks. It's right on their index, 180 loading docks for semi-trailers. Why would they put that in their submittal to you if that wasn't an intention? I, I can't answer that.
So in other words, it's part of the record that they submitted for approval, and I see it now, it's on page E47 for my colleagues. This is a zoning application site plan, and that you have a large copy of what we have in our file, right? And, and I'm sorry, so I was looking for it and I didn't hear what you said. What, what is this purport to, to say?
If you look at it...
Yes, sir, I am.
There, there's an index on the side of the second one, which is just, not as in much detail, that shows how many semi-trailer loading docks there will be in three buildings totaling 550,000 square feet. And it shows 180 loading docks, again, I say, for semi-trailers.
185 loading docks?
180 is, if you add your number.
180 loading docks for...
Semi-trailers.
For semi-trailers.
And all I ask, I mean, I heard what they said, is why, if that's not their intention, would they have made it a part of their exhibit in their application? That was their choice.
Okay, so this appears to be a commercial site. Commercial in terms of, I'm not going to be able to put my shoes in there. These big storage units are going to be used for some type of, I don't want to use that nasty word, distribution, but it will be for storage, and then another truck could come, and let's not use the word distribution site, let's use the word transfer from there to someplace else. Is that basically what this purport to be?
Well, your first discussion was not inaccurate because there is 100, I believe, 150,000 storage facility, as was talked about. It's just, there's another 550,000 square feet that has this semi-trailer's loading space.
Okay. Thank you. And how long have you been there?
We've been at Irish Acres for 15 years, at least the first three, and then purchased 12 years ago.
Very good. Okay, and you say you represent a group called SARAH?
That's correct.
What does that stand for, sir?
Save the Ag Reserve for Agriculture. And it consists of farms and ag businesses in the ag reserve that want to stay in business. And there's a limitation, a condition of membership, if you will, that you're committed to staying in business for the foreseeable five years. Things change, and then sometimes they don't, but that's the intent, is you're looking at the longer term for agriculture's benefit.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell.
Commissioner Flores, and then Commissioner Woodward.
Mr. O'Donnell, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Thank you for being here. I have had the pleasure of visiting your farm, and I also had the pleasure of hosting you, as we discussed, this, this particular project.
Yes, you did.
So thank you for, for taking the time to do that with us. My, my question to you is, this, and we, we discussed this, this particular applicant has come before four other times. This is the one that seems to match what we've requested in this area. If we weren't to approve this, what, what would you be okay with approving? Because...
Nothing.
I, I also have to be respectful to, to the applicants and their property rights, because I think you, everybody should have property rights. What would you be willing to, to be, to live with here?
We, SARAH and the farms on Starkey, ex, by the way, two of those farms are trying to sell their property. That's their prerogative. I totally appreciate that. And one is a, leases their, some of their growing space from the site that's in question. We offered, I think it was actually at your request, but it was, then several commissioners asked that we, the group I just talked about, send in, recommend it, other alternatives would be a better way to put it. And there were 26 of them that we submitted that we would support, properly done. And the ones we didn't support in the past, it wasn't the concept, it was the density, the, the variances that were requested, so that whatever was allowed, like eight housing units in an acre on the workforce housing that was approved and, across from Delray's, Delray Marketplace, they wanted more than double that. That was just an example of what I mean by density. So it was not the concept, it was the density. And this time, it's not the density per se, it's what comes with it. The semi-trailers, the noise, the 24-hour-a-day operation. That's just, people live there, businesses are there. I think any of you, if it were where you lived or your business was, wouldn't be too excited about hundreds, if not thousands, of semi-trailers operating 24 hours a day in front of your house, or in front of your business, or tying up. This is what a couple of the farms are very concerned about, ours included, is their customers, they depend on drive-in business from wholesalers with trucks, with trailers, they're very concerned, as I am, that the semis on the road that'll be added, they don't exist today, will be blocking the entrances to our property or inhibiting the entrance to our property for customers.
So what I'm hearing is you're willing to work with the applicant?
100%.
Okay. And when did, how long have you been in this property?
We leased it for three years and we've owned it for five, uh, for 12, sorry. We've been there 17, if that works out right, 15.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Woodward?
Thank you. Just, just to kind of address part of this discussion, what the applicant is asking for, we, we talked about the 150,000 square feet of self-service.
Hold on one second. Are you talking to the staff?
Both.
Okay.
So, this is a question for both, and, but we keep talking about the loading docks and the, and all of that, which is not part of the 150,000 square feet, that's part of the 533,000 square feet of warehouse with 40,000 square feet of accessory office.
Correct.
So just to be clear, when we're talking self-storage, that could be to your shoes, but what his concern is, is the 500,000 plus that is the warehouse with accessory office.
Correct. We are not concerned about the self-storage.
Okay. So, and, and I had a meeting with you as well, and we had in our discussion, and I had a similar discussion with the applicant, on if we were to limit the individual bays to a maximum square footage that would not allow for Amazon distribution, which is the type of large distribution center that's not allowed here, but it also would ensure that anytime in the future, this doesn't become one large warehouse 24/7 operation that we're talking about. It's more of what we, we hear that's intended to have, you know, a business that has an office space and then their warehouse in the back for them to operate. So we had discussed, and, and I mentioned it with my staff review as well, I would, don't know what that number is, but if that would be part of the future discussion to ensure that the half-million square feet of warehouse with office is meant to be small business operations with, you know, they may have a box truck, or they have something where they're going to come and get, say they do countertops, or, you know, that type of, they need a, a large bay to store it, but it's not going to be a distribution center where we put a whole bunch of Amazon packages here and then they get on another truck and go right back out, where it's that type of high volume. So we had discussed that. You seem demented to that. Staff, and again, we may be a bit ahead of ourselves, but if that is part of the discussion moving forward through transmittal on designing it to ensure that it's not cross, cross bays, it's not, you know, large, you know, 100,000 square feet per, per location that would pretty much guarantee it becomes a distribution center. Is that something, because when we talked, you, you were interested in that. Is that something that your group has been able to discuss?
If it were truly a warehouse function, which would be similar to what you just described, or versions thereof, that wouldn't require 180,000, 180 loading docks for semi-trailers. It wouldn't be there. When this, I was involved with a group in, in working at the request of zoning when the CMR concept was created. If Lisa had a great idea, and there were a lot of people involved in lots of meetings, lots of hours, on how to control warehouse/distribution, and her idea, it was elegant in its simplicity. It was capited 100,000 square feet, period. And then you're not going to have to worry about large distribution businesses because that restriction ensures they're what they, what they're, what the county intended when they created commerce, which was warehouses.
So to be clear, are you talking about a 100,000 square foot building?
Yes.
Or 100,000 square foot per, per tenant?
No, no, building.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I could agree with that.
You can't have a distribution center that's of any consequence. I used to be in this business. That's all I understand.
I'm just saying, I mean, for, for myself, I do, I'm east, I'm in an urban area, and there are a number, Clintmore Road comes to mind, where we have these bays, where there's an office in the front and there's warehouse space in the back.
Correct.
And if, and as what I understood, that's what this is planning to be, and it does support a number of small businesses that support the surrounding community. And if that, if we can make sure that when this does come back to us for zoning, that that is in fact what we are approving, is that something you would support?
It, it's hard to say with, I understand where you're trying to go. It, it's hard to give you a definitive answer because there's too many ifs involved. The, the footprint of a building determines what it's going to be. People can say anything they want, but what they put their money in is what makes the difference. If they put their money in something as massive as this...
All right. Then this, this could be for a future discussion. I would disagree with you on the footprint of the building because the, the walls in between the bays, and there's, there's a lot that can be done with that. But this would be part of what I would expect to have in, in the transmittal phase, is in order to ensure that it is what we discussed, and I think it's what I'm, I'm okay with, and this would be definitely part of the process moving forward. And my other question on this was, you know, everything that before, which I only had this come before me once while I was on this board, this question is for staff, this one, as the commerce designation was put together, it does check all those boxes that we, last time, I think there were a number of variances and waivers that had to be considered. This is none of that, right?
Correct, yeah. So this is the fourth request from this particular property owner. All of the other ones involved either tax amendments to the comp plan or required, actually all of them also required an exemption to our long-range traffic standards. However, this one doesn't have that component. This is following the commerce designation adopted by the board, following the criteria, and is meeting all of those standards.
And is this property one of the ones that, because we had the ag reserve workshop earlier, this is one that still has its development rights? It's not one that's been put into preserve for some other building or anything that's happened? That every, he still has his development rights?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all my questions for now.
Commissioner, on that issue?
Mr. O'Donnell, the question has been asked and answered. Commissioner Sacks has her light on. I need to remind everybody that public comment is not a back and forth. It generally is a listen to the public and we get their comments. Commissioner Sacks, I appreciate your position, but we now...
I don't know my position yet.
We now allow...
I'll certainly respond.
Commissioner Sacks, please.
Thank you.
We've now allowed one person to take up a half an hour.
And he should, because he's knowledgeable and he represents...
He does not represent the petitioner.
No, no, no.
And he does not represent the zoning...
You're the boss.
Division, and he does not represent what is going to go forward in the sense of, this is transmittal. I have to remind everyone again, this is transmittal. We are not talking about zoning, we are not talking about the actual structure of the building, this is transmittal. If we could sit here all day and keep asking questions of Mr. O'Donnell, which of course, these are his opinions, which is not what we're here to do. We listen to the petitioner, we have staff here to give us information, we are going to adjourn in three minutes because we said we were going to adjourn at 1:00. So at this point in time, I'm going to ask Mr. O'Donnell, thank you for your input. You actually got a whole lot more than the two minutes that you were allowed, which is what you wanted in the first place. Commissioner Sacks afforded you that opportunity. I will ask you to sit down now.
Mayor, if I may, file an objection. I will ask Mr. O'Donnell to come up when we get back at 1:00. And secondly, when you talk about the issues that he brought up, the issues that Mr. O'Donnell brought up are combined in our staff report. Zoning application site plan is in our, it's on E47, so he didn't bring up any additional facts which were not already noted as part of the record and part of staff has, which is who we are too. We are part of the Palm Beach team. So, thank you very much for your opinion, and everybody have a good lunch, I guess. See you back at 1:00.
We're going to break for lunch. We will resume this meeting at 2:00.